All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, March 28th, 2023 at 4:00 PM. Is there a motion to call the Acushnet Board of Selectmen to order?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which stands on a nation under the guise of individual liberty, justice, and for all. Right, we don't have meeting mail. Our first appointment, Paul, if you wouldn't mind going to the podium, please. Our first appointment this evening is sort of a bittersweet, right? It's Paul Mazurako was the past president of the Acushnet Youth Soccer Association. And in that role, Paul really made an impact on the town of Acushnet specifically, but just in the general area. And we really, we wanted to ask you to come in to recognize you and your family for the efforts that you've done and the contributions that you've made to Acushnet during your time as president of the league. You know, Acushnet is known because of you and the league and, you know, your predecessors for soccer. Phenomenal travel program. And with your vision and foresight, now a first-class, club-level facility where, you know, families are able to have their kids play soccer for, what's the entrance fee? Like $110, $120 bucks a year, a season, to play on that facility and to play with the level of coaching that the league has provided. I know my boys were part of that program. And I've watched, you know, Alex and Skylah go through the program. And so just felt it was really appropriate to recognize you, but also your family. I mean, Stacy, being, heading up a league isn't just you, right? You know, I know what a commitment that your family has been, has provided this town in all those years. I know, Paul, you've always said you're only as good as your board and the people that you've worked with. But with that said, because you've been so good about passing out the credit to everybody else, wanted to bring you in to recognize you specifically. So with that, we do have a citation for you and to Paul Mazurako. During his time as league president, Paulo continued to grow the league into the success it is today. Over 400 local boys and girls aged four to 14 come to play soccer for AYSA each year. AYSA was once just a fall-season league, but has since expanded to a year-round program. The league under Paulo's leadership now has the opportunity to play on fields that are top of the line. Over the last several years, Paulo has, and his board have put together the funding and game plan that has allowed for improvements to the school grounds in which they utilize. Irrigation has been installed, fencing around the playing area, new nets, a walking path, as well as leveling the playing field. Paulo would say that he couldn't do it without the members of his board, and he is right. Paulo has had a great group of board members willing to stand with him in building up this program. However, for anyone involved in sports programs or any other large youth organizations, know the sword always falls on the president of the program. In this case, that's Paul Mazurako. Many hours go into volunteering and many more go into being league president. Thank you, Paul, for your time, effort, and hard work that you have put in for the years. You'll be missed. The Board of Selectmen acknowledges your 10, 12 years of dedication and hard work to the Acushnet Youth Soccer Association, this community. I'll just say this, Paul, I don't want to, most people might get embarrassed by this, but I know you won't. One of the greatest moments of all time is Paul at a New England Revs game with the whole soccer league. And the rev score a goal, and next, you know, you look over, Paul's got his shirt off, waving the thing, and then you look over, and there's a bunch of kids with their shirts off waving this stuff. So I don't want you to do that tonight, Paul. Congratulations to you. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you a lot, Dave. I really appreciate it. First off, I want to thank my wife and my kids for supporting me the whole time during this process. A lot of hours spent away from my kids and my family trying to get these soccer fields developed. But again, right, it wouldn't happen if it wasn't also for the help of the Acushnet Selectmen, the board, everyone that's involved in Acushnet, because without their support and approval, none of this would happen, right? And also a big help to Dan, which helped me, you know, through the process, stuff like that, you know, getting these fields and, you know, talking to him and getting what needs to be done and stuff like that, working with him, it was great. I really appreciate working with him. And then also, you know, the mind behind this beautiful grass that we have is Steve here. I want to thank him, you know, a lot for helping me and guiding me of what needs to be done, what fertilizer we need to put down on this. And I mean, it was a battle, but we got it done. And I just want to say thank you to anyone that was involved and that helped me through the process, because without the support, I wouldn't be able to do this by myself.
She's knocking in the back, Paula Bailey. Without the schools' approval and Paula's support, just awesome. This is, you know, the fields are really, is really a symbol of when people care about the kids, stuff will get done, right?
Yeah, Paula, thank you. I mean, I know it was a period of time where it was just like that, but it was great. Again, you know, these kids out there and stuff like that, enjoying the fields. Now these kids are not picking weeds and you're not seeing dirt going everywhere and stuff like that. And it's nice to see families also walking around the soccer fields and stuff like that. And I go by there a lot and I see families walking through that, that path and stuff like that on the weekends, which is great. Something that the school never had, and I'm glad that we got it done for the residents and the kids. So thank you, Rick. Thank you very much, Paul.
Well, gentlemen, you've had a chance to...
I think, I think one of the, you know, when I met Paulo, you know, it was the early stages of what we were doing. And I think that the thing that I'm most grateful for, Paulo, is the impact you've had on the children, right? I seen it firsthand, being out there. I just swing by the place and I just watch all the little kids playing. And I think that's probably the biggest goal of all you folks that committed your time and dedication to those fields is the impact that you had on our children. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I just have a regret that I'm meeting you tonight for the first time. Never got a chance to work with you, but throughout the entire town, everybody that's ever mentioned your name, it's been positive. And I, on behalf of myself, thank you for taking care of the kids in this town and doing what you love and letting it so kids can also enjoy and love something. I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Paul. Take a photo with us and...
As we say, obrigado.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Nice to officially meet you.
Thank you. Grab that. We'll be booking. We got the golf team, Paul, here. If you want to start a golf league for us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Good stuff. Good guys, all right. All right, next item on the agenda, Dan Menard and his team are here. Gentlemen, I was asked to put this on the agenda just to give some direction. You know, stuff won't happen overnight, and there's still a process in place, but I know I've gotten a number of calls, especially from the folks on Anthony Street and Helen Street. We identified these streets now for several years. And so, Dan, if you can kind of make the case, you know, if the board would consider approving those, and then work, Mr. Gasper and Mr. Kelly will work as our liaison, work to make sure that there's a schedule in place. So, Dan, floor is yours.
Now, you guys got the sheet with the estimates?
Yeah, Earl Street, Joseph, Helen, and Anthony.
I do, Anthony Street is already, they did the work and it's went through the winter, so that one we can actually do. Helen, Joseph, and Earl, the gas company still has work to be done over there. So these estimates are without the gas companies, because they'll give us a portion of that to repair them. So that would come off at a later date. They're supposed to be starting, I believe, at least another month or so. This week they're already starting. So they're already going to be starting work and only doing that. But you want to let them settle in before we kind of do any kind of reconstruction of the roads there. So it's going to be, that'd be late summer or something like that. You know, at least give them six months of time to...
All right. I know the other stuff here, Perry Hill and Middle Road, that's another issue. But gentlemen, any issues with Earl Street, Joseph, Helen, and Anthony Street to authorize those to be done?
The only, the only thing I would, because I've been kind of working on that with Mr. Kelly, is, and Dan just alluded to, is they are going over to those three streets to dig those roads up. Of course, settlement takes six months, so you want to be looking at, by the time that's all said and done, if you're lucky, you might be able to catch it in November. If not, you're going into the spring of next year. And I, and I would rather not do, we have money in Chapter 90 funds, so I'd rather not say or comment too much, because EverSource will be applying a pretty, pretty good portion of this to us to be able to do in the future. And basically, what Dan's saying is, we play cat and mouse now, right? With EverSource is they're just, they're ripping up a bunch of roads, replacing a bunch of gas mains. So everywhere they go, Dan and I and Mr. Kelly and Ms. Silver's been kind of watching where they go. We communicate where they go. We wait until when we worked out a program, because we bought a paver, we worked out that program to save a ton of money on the Chapter 90 and things of the like, so we get more paved, is they always give an apportionment of the road.
Okay.
So, you know, it's kind of like, we're looking at numbers right now. The allocation won't even be close enough from the Chapter 90 funds. So Anthony Street is one that's absolutely ready to go. That road's been a mess. I've talked to a number of residents on that road. In fact, last year, I think, Dan, we had them go, EverSource go back over and redo the trench. It got so bad. So they went back in there and redid that road. So we're ready to fly on Anthony Street. And you have a number from EverSource?
Actually, gave me that today. So he came up, so my, the estimate I had was like 77. They're coming up with 48, 7, 28, 463. So there's almost 49,000 is going to come off of that, 77 towards that. Like the other ones, we did, we did overlay. This is going to be a reclaim. That's the right way to do it. That road is just, there's no way we can even overlay that one. So that one's going to be reclaimed up, so totally ground down and regraded and paved.
When, Dan? So a lot of people at home and for all of us that don't know, overlay versus reclamation.
Okay. Overlay was just going over the existing thing with a, it's basically inch and a half layer of mix on top, just to smooth it out. But the problem with that, you get driveways. And the other thing is with, with Anthony Street, it's got so many like rocks coming up and everything else, you can't even run the paver over it smoothly. So that one's going to be reclaimed, which they take down to a foot down and it gets all ground up. And then they road grade it and take the material out that you're going to pave and you put, we'll put two inches of binder and two inches of top, is what we're going to do.
Much bigger expense, but you can see Dan's got 77 grand, let's just call it 50. So for 27,000 bucks, again, a total reclamation. When, when the overlay, can we talk to the people? So when we talk overlay, we have a company that comes in and they got this massive grinder, it's called milling, and they mill the road prior, right? So they take off, Dan just talked about an inch and a half.
Yep.
Is there anything that we can do to go a little bit deeper and do two inches?
No, you can cut two, you can cut two and a half.
Because just because what we did from Lake Street over to Bow?
Yep.
Right at the beginning of Lake Street, it's already showing the grind again.
Well, that, we had a couple prob, a couple issues there. One was the milling guy had some problems with his milling and he didn't get it all the way down. Number two, that was the, the paver was messed up on that job as well, so the, the heated screed wasn't working. And then that's where we first started and it kind of dragged the mix there. So that was a bit us and a bit the reclaim.
Just getting a little bit deeper. On the roads that we can mill, because, see, so what he's talking about, Anthony Street, we can't mill that road. And you're going to buy, it's, what was that called? Chip seal?
It's called coal planing when you take out...
No, I'm talking about the roads that are crap. They only have like this much tile.
So where they just put this stone tower mix.
And it's like a thin coating of tile.
And they did a lot of streets like that. It's, it's only like a half inch, an inch. So you don't have no base there, yeah.
Meadow off of Middle Road is three streets, and I like to have that conversation, because EverSource wasn't communicating very well at that point. Jamie and I kind of stepped in, but they weren't doing too good of a job communicating with Mr. Menard about how we're going forward and how we're doing this. And they went over and paved those three side streets and they only did half the road. It looks like crap. When Dan and all of us got engaged in it, now that was the whole purpose of it, and they kind of got out ahead of themselves and they went and paved without notifying us or Dan, and they just paved it. They actually milled Meadow and they took it right down to the dirt, because it was only like an inch of surface there. I mean, I'm not saying we need to go back over and do, but when we do roads, we need to do curb to curb. It looks like crap. And people on those streets, those three side streets, I've also been over there and contacted by residents, and they said, is that really acceptable by you, Mr. Gasper? And I said, absolutely not. Well, we're changing our ways. So I think we need to have the discussion on whether or not we can get over there and...
Well, you see how much of a benefit that is, because they're going to give us almost 50 grand to do this, you know what I mean? And we're going to do it the right way and the whole road's getting done, because that would have been the same way.
Correct.
It would have been just a, not even half a road, you know what I mean? Wouldn't have been half the street. What they do is they do two foot beyond the cup, they're cupbing into the curb line. That's, so if they're only eight feet out, they're only going to do it 10 foot wide. If they're 10 foot out, they'll do 12, you know what I mean? Depending how where their main is in the street, that's how they kind of come up with a number and everything. But that's paying, because they don't do it themselves, so they pay a company to come in and grind them.
Mr. Kelly and I have a meeting actually, right? Mr. Kelly, next week with EverSource? I believe it's next week, Thursday, I think it is? So we're going to make that communication to EverSource to not ever do that again.
Good.
Because those three streets, it just looks horrible. One side of the road's beautiful, the other side's all cracked, and Dan would have never, if he would have known they were getting out there and it's already too late, they were already out there doing his thing, and what are you going to do at that point? You can't stop them from doing their work. But it's kind of when we were in the process of making that negotiation of giving us some money, because we have our own paver and things of the like. So 100% on board with Anthony Street. It's ready to go. The road's settled. We got a lot of other roads that were playing cat and mouse, the, for instance, My Day Board, they came in last year and messed that all up as well. So we'll be looking at that, because they're all settled out too. So that'll be a discussion for Corey and Vedano, I'm sure, and even some of Anthony at the top that you have already overlaid. But they had to do what they had to do, so we gave them approval to do things of the like. Absolutely. Helen Street, Joseph Street, Earl Street, it's absolutely on the radar. It's like I said, it's, they go in, do their thing, we sit back and ride the tail, the coattail of the project, wait for them to allocate a certain amount of funds like they just did with Anthony Street. We swoop in and Dan says, this is what it's going to cost me to do the whole job. In some cases, they would give us, just use $40,000. And Dan says, if all we're doing is milling it and putting two inches of overlay on it, that 40 grand covers it, just because we're doing it in-house now. So yeah, it's all streets that are, they're on the target list.
Well, I think, you know, this is just as much about an exercise in making sure that we've got a plan and a target, right? So I think it would be good if we could get a vote from the board to officially approve, to direct DPW to work on Anthony Street, you know, when the schedule clears up.
Absolutely. I'll make a motion to approve taking Anthony Street out right now.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Regarding Earl, Joseph, and Helen, a motion to address how those streets upon EverSource's completion, settling, so on and so forth. This way, again, it's on your whiteboard, you know it's an issue, we know we've got to work on it, and it just doesn't fall by the wayside. So could we have a motion to approve Earl, Joseph, and Helen upon EverSource's completed work? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Great, thank you. The other ones, gentlemen?
Dan, we have it on ours. We're targeting, we're targeting those roads, saying that we're, we're ready to go and we're going to allocate funds from Chapter 90.
Right.
Right? There's going to be other things that you need to get done earlier.
Yep. All right. We've got a couple of other ones there.
Just so the board knows, Chapter 90 has gone back to the old system. Legislature rejected the two-year plan.
So finally, it's, we have...
That's okay. It's better anyway that you don't get too far yourself.
We have, we have three or four in and out. And again, so as of July, they'll give us another 314, which will be at like 618 come July.
So Perry Hill Road is one that you flagged, I'll say, at least a year ago?
Correct.
But there was no definition of Perry Hill Road? We did the top part of Perry Hill Road, but then it wasn't, you know, we talked about target. Give us a mailbox address to what point, to what point? So then, at least when the board looks at it and considers it, we can hit the road and go over there and look at it. I went down Perry Hill Road, and I'll be honest with everybody, I don't spend a lot of time traveling down that road. Here and there, I do. It's pretty nasty coming into Acushnet, the gutters of that road.
And again, that wasn't overlayed back then, and you can see it's only like, that was like part of an inch of top coat they put on it, and then now it's all breaking apart and lifting up. And there's no way you're going to put like patches and patches over that.
No, I understand, but we can mill that, right?
Correct. That could be milled, take two inches out and put two inches of mix in. That's what we did actually up on the top pad.
There's no problems with EverSource. We haven't had that communication, but I don't even know if there's that gas out there.
There is gas there, actually, and I talked to them, and they are not. They ran a, a main down from Mendel Road down to the Rochester housing thing or something back. That was probably, I don't know, eight years ago or so. Yeah, they said they're, they're not planning to do anything on it.
So that's a mill price right there to 190?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, it's milling two inches out and two inches of mix in.
We're losing roads faster than we can repair them, gentlemen. So, and I, I know that that road is really starting to blow apart. And before it gets to the point where we can't mill it and fix it and it ends up a total reclamation, which that won't be a pretty price tag on that. So, you know, I'm, I'm cool with the project. I mean, I think it really needs to get done, and that's basically all the way up to Mendel. And Dan, you did Mendel to, to Main Street a few years back, right? So that basically completes Perry Hill.
That one was reclaiming that section over there. That one had the trenching from the gas boys and all that stuff, and even the water trench was there when they looped the water main back. That was even before I got here, but that trench was all messed up.
But that completes Perry Hill for us, right? From Main down to the Rochester line.
Correct. Yep.
It's a big, it's a big chunk of change, but we got to get the incident on. You know, there's a bunch of other spots in Acushnet, Main Street and all that, so...
Mr. Hinkley?
I, I agree. I think spending 190 now is a lot better than what we'll end up having to spend if we have to do a full reclamation. So I have no problem with that.
All right. Then there's a motion to approve Perry Hill, Mendel Road to Rochester Town Line. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Excellent.
Now, that one, it's Middle Road, but this was a, again, you could piece me on that a little bit. And this is actually from DW White to the schools. And a lot of it is from the old sewer trench, which was done, again, that was, that force made was done in, I think, in the 80s or whatever. Nah, I don't know that one. It was a little long time ago, either way, that.
It was a long time. Right, it was a long time ago, man.
So that's all pretty much settled out, and that's another one that would, would be taken out, milling and paving.
So that, so Lynn Allen, that's the little side street right across from the middle entrance from Ford, Ford Middle School and Elementary School?
Yep. Correct.
Down to where we, we did the last paving project several years back on Middle Road, and I forget the address on the mailbox. But anyways, it's right after DW White, right? The property, right where the farms, I forgot the name of that little farm?
Yeah.
And that trench is collapsing in pretty bad over by the schools.
And that's going curb to curb, and it's like 1,600 feet long.
Holy cow, it's 16?
1,600 feet, yeah. So it's a little over a quarter mile.
Depends on what the board, I mean, again, I'm, we need to do main roads. I mean, emphasis, main roads, where all these crappy roads we have, but main roads and then, you know, we got little pots of money that we get at these little side streets chasing EverSource. I think it's a, a good plan, and I'm all for it.
I have no problem giving you direction, right? We vote on it. It's a priority. We'll leave it up to you guys to decide when it gets executed, right?
Mr. Chairman, that one would be for the summer, right?
Correct. I could do both of them this summer.
So it won't impact at all on the funds?
So basically, that's 190 and 70, so you're like, what's that, 260? So that's actually even just an effect in the 300 we have now, so we're still going to have that 314.
What Jamie was concerned about is disrupting stuff during school?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, this would be a summer.
This happens, that's for sure. Let's, okay. Is there a motion to approve Middle Road, DW White to Lynn Allen Drive? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Dan, when can you start? When do you think you could start Anthony? Because those people are kind of avid.
The plant's still currently closed, he's doing work on it. So I think within the next few weeks, they're going to be opening it up. The warmer out, the better the job.
I know, I know. And you got to haul it from Rochester now, so you're not mad at us, right?
Yeah, even with the paver, it seems like it definitely comes a lot nicer with the warmer weather, you know, to do it so. But I got to just line up, I got to go back out to bid now, because that one's a reclaim. So it's going to take at least a month or so before you can kind of get in there, because we're going to put it out.
Yeah, the company's got to come in and mill it.
Right, it's going to have to work a bit for the reclaiming. So, yeah, the milling ain't much, that's really not that much money, but I got a few guys that can get on that as far as Perry Hill. But again, that's going to be due in the summer, and thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. All right, next one is, it's Lake Street update. Dan, first of all, thank you. Many of you have seen there's some work going on at Lake Street. Sort of really make it understood that, yes, it's a beautification project, but it's really driven by public safety. Guardrails, dedicated canoe kayak launches, you know, even like just little thing, Dan's putting in the stone wall to create a separation between the driveway and where people, you know, where the picnic tables are, right? So cutting down dead trees, people may say, wow, you're cutting down, these are trees that were probably just a matter of time before they fell into the road. So that's really good stuff there. But there is one piece of this that we need the board's consideration on, and Dan, you can get into it. The plan was, keep in mind, this is a plan that was approved like three years ago, two years ago, by the Lake Street Committee, but was held in abeyance because of, we're working out the ownership with the city. But to put guardrails, to extend the guardrails along Lake Street, and with time, prices escalate. So, Dan, maybe you could speak to that?
Yeah, the original quote was like 36,000, which actually we already got allocated in the Chapter 90. It's been sitting there, just waiting for us to do the project. So in the meantime, I reached out to the company that was doing it, and they kind of came in, oh, we got to rebid this. And he came in at 64. So it's a difference of like 28, 29,000, all this difference from the original quote to do the same job, so.
Now, Dan, we did do an article at town meeting a couple of years ago, it was like seventy-five grand. Thirty of that was set aside, or thirty-five-ish was set aside for the weed remediation.
Yep.
So I think if we had to either go chapter ninety here or dip into that a little bit, um, we could do that.
Well, that's what I'm hearing, see what the board wants to do with that.
So you said you put it out to, no, you didn't put it up, it was thirty-five Gs, let's use this up round numbers?
Yep.
So now you got somebody, then it looks like this quote says something around sixty-five?
Sixty-four and change, yep.
Yeah, sixty-four, sixty-two, fifty, so that triggers procurement, don't it?
Correct. Anything over fifty thousand, it's gonna go into combines, it's gonna be advertised in the, in the paper and all that stuff, so. Anything over fifty thousand, I do got one more bid coming in, so if I get one bid that's under the fifty, I got my three quotes and I can still get away with it, but I'm still waiting for one more quote to come in, which I didn't get yet, so. But at this time, with these two quotes, I guess we'll have to go out and get to that.
Is that how procurement works?
If, if he doesn't get the fifty, we have to go to combines and everything else.
Yep.
So if you get three bids, two are over fifty, one is under fifty, you can sneak in and take the fifty?
That's right.
Under fifty.
Thirty-nine-nine anyway.
I kinda, I, I mean, Dave said it, um, you know, given all the paving that we need to do, I, I would be, if it's gotta go out to procurement or whatever it needs to be, we'll have to take a wait and see. But if the article was written that Dave said, and if not, and we gotta go through that procurement process, which could be weeks, I would much rather advise the town administrator to put an article, if the one that he just talked about doesn't fit into the scope of work, because it all depends on how that article was written, I would prefer to put an article on town meeting floor for, say, forty grand. And just get a little extra money from town meeting, and I don't see how people at town meeting would say no to forty thousand dollars to complete the project. Um, I think there's a lot of people that are supportive of the Lake Street project. So neither, neither here or there, we can figure out, there's, there's one point three million in free cash, asking for forty grand for, or maybe a little bit more, whatever we need to do, whatever we need to do to make the project safe, cause I know that the rocks are being moved back for sidewalks and things of the like and, you know, we got some crazies that drive down the road at a hundred miles an hour and we have had a couple of people actually take the car into the pond, right?
And actually since the God reels been there.
Right, chief?
There's been a lot of.
Not recently.
No, did that God reel and it's actually, you know, already since.
Are we still doing wood, we doing wood, we're gonna stay with the wood all the way down?
Yeah.
We'll keep more of a country feel.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. So however we need to do that, see where you end up with bids?
Okay.
I mean, sixty-five to try to get somebody a fifty?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm not, you know, but you never know, so.
You know, that's twenty-something percent below the seller person, I don't know if that's.
Well, this, the one that's gonna give me the quote, um, at least came to the job and looked at it, the guy that gave me the other quote, you know, was from Florida, they didn't even come by.
Hey, hopefully we get it and you'll have to do it, and we'll figure out.
So Dan, work with, I'll work with you and Jamie on if we need an article.
Okay.
Let's do that. Thank you for Mr. Gasper for offering that up, I think that's a, a good option. Um, again, it's safety, it's a major thoroughfare, um, and I'm hoping, you know, when it's all said and done, I was just down there yesterday. And what's really cool is they're, you know, already making way for a walking path, you guys have built a little, little walk bridge to go over the, uh, you know, there's a little stream that runs underneath, so you'll be able to walk pretty much in a circle all around the, you know, the ponds on the lakes, it's really, it's really cool. And I was in the, in the, in the deep part of it yesterday and it was really impressive and I took a picture, threw it in the bag, but there was just one small little, um, pile of garbage. And so if there's people walking back there now, thank you.
Yep.
Um, because I was really impressed with the fact that there was none of that going on. And, you know, we worked with Becky to get some dog, you know, bags and stuff like that, um, that'd be kinda fun. And, um, you know, do some things to highlight the entrance and, um, it's gonna be really a, a fun project to finish up.
Can we, can we? Cause I know he's out there working, but I don't really know what this project can consist of.
Wanna do a tour?
No, I, I mean, if you got, you don't have, we don't have plans, it's, didn't somebody do plans for us or like a rendition of what we might, like the before and after? I always like when people come in and propose things, I mean, we got the school department, he had to do solar stuff. And it's kinda like, I like, I think it's beneficial for, for residents when we're asking for money at town meeting, we, we do things way ahead of town meeting and we put it up and, you know, the before and the after picture.
You can do that.
Show, you know, it doesn't have to be perfect, but just kind of a rendition of what it is now, what we're looking to do and you kinda gain a lot more traction and support for things instead of just being in, you know, somebody's mind and get it out there. And I, cause you know, our first thing I said to Dan is, talking about chapter ninety money is, I think we really need to do asphalt aprons going in and out of the parking lots, right? Because a lot of crap falls off people's wheels, at least then it would fall off in the apron and not in the street.
Yep.
So I think we need to go back a certain distance and at least pave into, from Lake Street into it, make some nice aprons go in, so it kinda dresses up the parking lot a little bit.
Absolutely, yep.
Uh, Mr. Jammin, just to reiterate something I think I mentioned a month ago, there's also an Eagle Scout that's looking for a project that would involve, a lot of issues with fishing line and hooks down there, uh, lines break and people pretty much just leave them there. And, uh, he wants to install a receptacle basically for broken fishing line, so, you know, any, any way we can mitigate any litter or issues like that, we don't want anybody stepping on hooks or hurting themselves.
Great idea for an Eagle Scout.
I, I thought it was an excellent project.
Well, look, here's the deal, I think this is gonna be many hands, this is gonna be an ongoing process, so Bob, if you wanna coordinate that with the scout?
Absolutely.
By all means, and if everybody else has ideas to make it better, I see Mr. Tibbles, even though we're saying, talking about safety, Steve, maybe we can lean on you to drive by and if you see any, uh, ideas to make it look aesthetically pleasing with plantings like you've done at the golf course? We'd love to take your free advice.
Free advice.
If it was a golf course, hey, if it was a golf course, what would you do to make it look nice?
Put the nineteenth holder.
Well, I, you know, I agree, he's in landscape architecture too.
Perfect, that would be awesome, you know, maybe we'll put a, uh,
I'm sure if I see that.
You know, a little four-hole, uh, mini golf somewhere there.
Depending how creative you wanna get, we could put a little, uh, project right there in the middle, you know, for kids to go down or people to go down and make a little, you know.
Party green?
Activity.
Yeah, you know, a little, put it right in the middle of the pond.
Little mini bucks.
I was gonna say, put a bucket on the bow on the pond. All right, well, good stuff, thank you, thank you, Dan. Um, so do we have any, um, what's the resolution here on the guardrails, is that Jamie's gonna work on it?
We have to wait, we have to wait for the next person and then we have to do an article.
I should have definitely something this week awesome for you, so I'll get in touch with Jamie.
Good stuff, thank you.
All right, uh, snow and ice report.
Okay, um, currently we got twenty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-seven left. But we still have to pay out the, uh, the nineteen thousand for the thousand, uh, for the nineteen highs we have, for that thousand year end bonus.
Yep.
Don't forget me, all right? That one time?
So we'll, we'll probably be, you know, probably around three, four grand left over. As long as we get enough, I think, hopefully, we're done, but.
The first year we're not gonna have a deficit?
I'm hoping, yeah. I'm not saying, but, uh, I think I got plenty of salt and stuff like that, so we should be good anyways, so.
You F O with getting the salt like we had discussed last night?
Yep, we're, this, all the bonds full, so.
Yeah, already stocked, good point, Mr. Hinkley brought up a good point, we talked about that, already stocked for next year?
Yep, sorry.
Excellent, wow, that's pretty good.
Good. All right.
Excellent, great.
Thank you, Dan.
All right.
Tell the other guys, uh, thank you, you guys are doing great work over there, it looks awesome. Dan, keep it up.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, thanks, Kath.
Hi, Kath.
All right, next on the agenda, Chief Fox and, uh, Mr. Karen from the E M A. I know we've, um, with the retirement of Mr. Bergeron, um, his transition, uh, where the chief is overseeing the E M A in coordination with, with Ed, and wanted to use this opportunity to reach out to you as we're looking at, uh, Mr. Kelly and I were at a legislative breakfast the other day and had a chance to talk with our legislative delegation, and it occurred to me that, you know, if there's opportunities for earmarks in the state budget or if there's grants out there, I would be aware of it to chase down that money, but really wanted to give a, an opportunity to for you to come before us, talk about some of the capital needs at the building, but also wanted to give Ed a shout out for his many years of dedicated service.
Absolutely.
And all the work that you've done over there, Ed, I always say that your email alerts are the best in the business, much better than, uh, Weather Channel or anyone else, you're the, the source of truth when it comes to, uh, all things weather related, so, um, that.
Um, so gentlemen, I, I was able to throw together a quick memo for you guys, um, also shared with, with Mr. Karen. There's not a lot of detail as far as the requests, as far as looking towards earmarks or funding opportunities, grant opportunities. Um, but just to quickly go through it, um, since January, we've, we've gotten some, some things accomplished. Ed's working with some of the folks at M E M A to update our C E M P plan, that's C E M P, it's Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. It's supposed to be updated every ten or so years, um, so Ed's just going through that, making sure everything's up to date. Uh, we also have our shelter plan, animal shelter plan, a couple of other plans that will follow suit after this, uh, C E M P plan is done. We've also begun working more cohesively between the Office of Emergency Management and, and the Fire and EMS Department. Recently, we had, um, some of their volunteers and, and a bunch of their equipment out at Lake Street, um, we were doing a cold water rescue drill. Uh, we got some new, some new suits in thanks to a state equipment grant, um, that prevent us from becoming hypothermic when we need to go in and rescue somebody. So they had some equipment there, um, to help lighting, um, cause we do the drills at night. So getting to see the interaction between what used to be E M A and the Fire and EMS Department, um, we're starting to see it come together a lot more now. And, um, they were very excited to be there. Some of my staff and, and some of their staff are starting to look forward to some more, uh, opportunities to, to collaborate some more and create some further opportunities for everybody. As far as any capital plans or projects, it's just, it quickly, talking with Ed since last week, um, the building at Thomas Street where the emergency management, uh, is, is technically the town's emergency operating center, so when a hurricane hits, tornadoes, we had that microburst several years back, blizzards, anything like that, that building would be staffed, that would be the, like essentially the central command for the town. So looking at some of the needs that we would need to, to make that operate efficiently, we would need some, some communications updates, some radio equipment updates in there. Just the design and layout of the room where the equipment also houses would, would needs to be updated. Um, and another need that we discussed is, uh, the potential of an additional garage added onto the building. Through multiple grants over the last several years, Ed's been able to get a bunch of those street signs that we see everywhere. There's a couple of still in reserve that aren't being actively used throughout town, um, those are currently, um, exposed to the weather. Uh, there's a couple of SUVs and other vehicles and, and equipment that are, and they're locked away behind the gate, but they are exposed to the elements, so, you know, having funding to at some point plan in addition for the garage to be able to keep more of it enclosed and, and make it last longer is also something that wouldn't hurt us in any way.
Well, I think, you know, I don't know if the window's closed right now for the spring at the town meeting, but I think start, the time would start to think about infrastructure improvements for that facility for perhaps a fall town meeting, I think the time would be now to start doing that and come up with a prioritization. List, gentlemen, Mr. Hinkley?
I, I agree, um, chief, every time you're asked to do a task, you jump all over it and explain every reason why you need stuff, so I appreciate that, keep going at it the way you do and you, you do a pretty good justify, pretty good at justifying why you need items and, uh, just give us a, a list and, you know, we can prioritize from there.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, the building's old, right, and I've spent some time inside those, uh,
They need some love.
Inside, it does need a little love, we all, we all need that once in a while, but, you know, I, I can't stand seeing brand new equipment sitting outside. Bother's the hell out of me, we, uh, D B W, we're trying to do something with like an overhead, I think, Dan, we're gonna have that conversation again and feel that just a lean to anyway, I mean, you can leave the walls open, but at least if you cover it, um, that's what's important. In this particular case for E M A, uh, you know, I would say, stop looking at steel buildings, they're the cheapest route to go, right? Um, lumber prices and everything else, forget about it, I did, I did a few things with steel buildings in the past, they're super cheap, pretty, pretty quick to erect. Um, you do it on a flat surface that's already there, bing bam boom, you've got a nice little building, right, and they don't cost much at all.
Yeah, that, that parking lot that's there, that's already fenced in, is already pretty level, so there's not a lot that needs to be done there.
So I mean, you figure out the size that you need, um, I can connect you up with a couple of the steel building companies that are out there to do it. You know, for under fifty Gs, you can have a nice little building put up and, you know, accommodate and house all of his, all the equipment that's there. And it opens up the rest of your building for whatever else you need to do communications and keep your, your live personnel stuff that the, the folks actually need, right, the gear and all that stuff can be in-house, the things like you are talking about, you know, a couple of vehicles, signs and things of the like can be stored outside in that building, um, I think that's probably the best route for us to go, keeping it simple, right? Um, and I think we could do it at a very affordable cost, so, um, to give us everything that we need. So I think that's, that's the way to, the way to go. So if you guys wanna start discussing that, it's awesome, and I also extremely appreciate the collaboration between staff, right? Um, I read, I read the memo, I think it's pretty cool that E M A guys were out there with Fire, um, EMS guys at the pond. I don't know if anybody got to throw you in the water and save you.
I unfortunately had a prior comment, I could not.
Ed, you didn't have, Ed, Ed, you didn't have the opportunity to throw anybody in the pond, did you?
Ed, if you don't mind.
I'm gonna forget.
Ed, come on up, grab the microphone, grab the.
Ed's, Ed's been, you know, the face of E M A along with Jerry Bergeron for, he'll tell you how long, but for decades, um, he is so instrumental in our E M A and he's brought a lot of our young folks up in that E M A, so for everything you've done, Ed, right now's my opportunity to say thank you to you.
Thank you very much.
And that's the point, wanting to bring you in, I know in the transition, probably we're a little clumsy in how we handled that, so I wanna give you an opportunity to, to come in. For people who don't know you, introduce yourself, tell us how long you've been around and, you know, I just want people to know who you are, so.
Well, my name is Ed Karen, Deputy Director for the Kush Office of Emergency Management, been involved in public safety since nineteen seventy-six. I, um, started off in public safety with civil defense, like a lot of people do and they move on, but, uh, I decided I liked the field, so that was always a hobby. My first disaster was helping Red Cross, uh, do, uh, relief for during the downtown explosion back in nineteen seventy-seven. I had trucks there from Rhode Island and Cape Cod in the area and provided support to all the fire departments, uh, the Blizzard of seventy-eight. Moved on to, uh, New Bedford Civil Defense, then to F A V, cause they had an ambulance at the time, they had a volunteer ambulance as an E M T and went up, went up there, I'm also an E M T in nineteen seventy-eight, got my, uh, national certification, then the state took it over and I went back to national again. But, uh, moved on, uh, during that time, uh, I moved out of the area, went down into Plymouth, where I was the Communications Officer for the, uh, Town of Kings and Emergency Management, and we're under the, uh, ten mile D P Z of the power plant. That's a whole different world there, there we learned how to use and, and Emergency Operations Center, we're under the direct eyes of FEMA, Department of Energy and the state, uh, so there was a lot of testing there, a lot of drilling. And during that time, I also worked for the, uh, the Police Department part-time there, and my full-time job was with the Sheriff's Department. I started there in nineteen eighty-three and retired in twenty eighteen where I put more time here, uh, with, with the E M A. Uh, moved back, uh, back in about two thousand and one, a couple of years after, a couple of months after nine eleven. And somebody who knew me from that air south shore got me involved here with the Kushner. And I've been here now with the Emergency Management for fourteen years.
Imagine that, we have Miranakushna.
We're lucky to have you and your team and I know Tony, uh, Duarte, who helps out on our I T stuff. And, you know, for a volunteer unit, I mean, you can't, this personifies passion and commitment to the town, um, and you've got your, your, you know, you don't have your hand out for money, you have your hand out to the community to help it and, and make it better, so thank you for that. We, it's our obligation to provide you guys with the infrastructure to do the job, right? We can't expect you to volunteer and then not give you the tools, uh, to do it, um, so thank you and that's something we'll work on for sure.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
While we got you?
Uh, just a couple of things, I've been working with Mr. Kelly on, um, three articles for the town meeting. Um, one, the most, um, probably known is for the replacement of tanker one. From what I presented to you originally, the price tag's gone up to four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, there was a misprint in, in the F A V and neighborhood news, she said four seventy-five. Um, since that time, um, Mr. Manad reached out to me inquiring about what we were doing with the old tanker. Um, so I'm working with Mr. Kelly and with a couple of the different vendors that have given me prices on, um, what the value is in a trade-in versus what we can do if we decide not to, to trade it in and, and how we would have to rework the article around that.
What's the intention with the old tanker?
So they use, they are looking to use it for, uh, they power wash catch basins.
All cleaning drains.
Right, and they usually rent out equipment from other, from outside agencies.
Yeah, we use the old tanker down here on Laura Keen to do drain clean.
So this would in essence would, would take away having to contract out with somebody to rent equipment and have it in-house.
I want to.
The original intent was.
I want to make it into a smoke.
The original intent was I was gonna trade it in for the company and then what they did with it was, was on their dime, so.
What? Thought we were having barbecues with that bad boy.
All right, um, the second article was requesting authorization to order an ambulance. There's a two-year wait time on any kind of delivery for any emergency vehicles. Fortunately, the tanker is not in that because they have six or seven that they produce every six months. Our name is already kinda tagged on one of them, set aside, so we won't have a long delay, but the ambulances are all custom-built to spec for our department, um, and that's a two-year wait time. The way that I worded the article, um, brought up some questions, so we reached out to, um, Darren Klein and Jeff Blake with K P. And, um, they, they're advising us on how to rewrite it to make it legal and kinda hook us up. So there might be a number attached on it for the purposes of having it passed so that we can get our name on it. But we can adjust it in future town meetings as we see fit to, to make it work for us.
The, the legality is we put a number on it, uh, G O R insists on a number, we put it as borrowing, but we don't. it as borrowing, but we don't borrow. And then we have a future article that in a future town meeting would appropriate the money. And that will be sufficient to guarantee our place in line.
Oh, the order. Because everything's so backlogged.
Yep, correct.
But not with the tanker, not with the tanker.
Not with the tanker, just with the ambulance.
Two separate articles.
Two separate.
Two separate articles.
Okay, cool.
And then, so, once that gets our name on the list as of
Yep, I got you.
Town meeting.
I got
And then, once they assign a VIN number with the chassis, that's when the price gets locked in. And that's when we can make better plans for the final cost and what kind of funding source we're looking at. Um, and then the last one is an article seeking a home rule petition, um, for a personnel matter that
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly's been all over with you.
We, we have to do it as a home rule petition.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Well, I'm glad we have the golf course folks here. If I remember correctly, the enabling uh, article for the golf course was that any funds from the golf course would go towards like capital expenditures, right? So, we've got a tanker, we've got, uh, you know, so that's why we're gonna get that golf course paid off. So,
Yes, sir.
When we start needing these types of things, you know, um, we'll have a funding source down the road.
We got some, we got some big conversations to have with golf.
But either way, we gotta, uh, you know, that's why it's important we get the golf course right.
In the EMA, EMA, EMS, um, you know, they got EMS Reserve Receipt Account that draw in revenues. I mean, they've done a great job, um, with billing, bringing in roughly six hundred thousand a year. Um, it's pretty much fifty-five percent of your budget now?
Uh, roughly. Uh, so the, what we transfer every town meeting is about fifty, fifty-two percent of my budget.
Off the top of my head.
And then the rest stays in that account for cap, other capital purchases for the department.
Yep. So, between all of that, I mean, we, we have some flexibility. And I, I like the idea of forward-thinking because of that delay. I mean, I know we waited for a while for the load of a DPW and Chief, as our animal control officer's truck, we waited almost two years for a regular pickup truck.
So, our two ambulances are twenty sixteen and a twenty seventeen. So, if we order it now and we get it in two years, the truck we're, we're replacing
Ten years.
Will be almost nine years old.
Yeah.
Um, if we were to wait till we needed it. Now you're stretching it even further.
Yeah, that's not something you wanna wait until you, you need it.
No.
Because you pretty much need it every day.
The way we've been going, oh yeah.
Okay, great work, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right. Actually, you know, Ed, um, I know you've been really good about grants and this could be a safety issue. Um, which is something maybe we can chat about offline, but there was a legislation that was passed that went into law for bike and pedestrian safety. And it's called, um, I forget the exact name of it, but it has to do with crowding, you know, you gotta give it, you know, uh, somebody on a bike at least four feet of, of space. And Mass DOT has put out a request for municipalities that want signage and things of that nature that we could put, put up. So, if that's something you'd have an interest working on, uh, I'd like to chat with you about that and see if we can get those resources uh, in town. All right, great. Thank you. All right. Uh, next, Heather. Hi, Heather.
You may have this. Oh, you do.
Thanks, Heather, for coming in. Um, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Kelly and I were at a legislative breakfast a couple of weeks ago. And we saw Representative Paul Schmidt and we're talking about some of the, Rep Schmidt and Strauss and Senator Montigny, they were really good about uh, securing earmarks for us for projects in town. And we, we discussed um, Council on Aging, there's some of those needs. But it'd be great to hear from you personally what those are and if there are other things, again, on the horizon that we should know about, um, that we can either ask for money from our legislative delegation or have it, you know, in a sort of CapEx plan for the November town meeting or maybe even now if there's something that's really pressing, we need to know about. So, what was yours?
I'm gonna piggyback on what Chief Farland said with it needs a little love.
Yeah.
Um, so if you look at page two of the PowerPoint that I, we pulled together on Friday, um, fiscal year nineteen, we were awarded a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in a building repair article. It was really in conjunction with EMA so that we could upgrade for shelter. So, just to give you a quick synopsis of what we did, um, with uh, Mr. Duart from EMA and Nick, they installed security cameras. Um, we now have Wi-Fi throughout the building. Uh, we put a new flooring. We installed the handicap accessible bathroom. That project is complete. A new gen, I don't wanna read it to you, you can front of you, but just to give you kind of the bullet points. Um, the only pending project from that is the handicap accessible doors. I did follow up on that project. That's what I wanted to give you. Oh, I'll give you a calculator, but just to follow up on that project. Um, so we had transitioned our maintenance staff. What, so what should have been completed in January, we, I now worked with Mr. Kelly. We had to outsource that to the Roche Brothers. So, um, that invoice has been approved. Those doors should be installed sometime in the spring. So, I did follow up on that yesterday. If you could probably have. If money is available, we, we wanna look at the nice-to-haves. Um, our heating system, I know we talked about that a few weeks ago when I was here. We're, it's hobbling along. Those furnaces were put in when the building was renovated in nineteen ninety-nine. As you know, things like that don't get better with age. So, if you set the heat on eighty, you might get it to seventy. So, it's definitely struggling. Um, again, our bathrooms, our men and ladies room, aside from that one that was just done, that was done in ninety-nine. We have water boil on speed aisle. Our toilets are always leaking. Our sinks are getting old. It's just, it's time for cosmetic upgrade for that. Structurally, it's in good shape, but the toilet's old, the sink's old. Um, our windows, Mr. Kelly was there at Christmas time. When we did our Christmas celebration, our windows fall down. It's hard to get them back up and secure them. So, again, it's just, it's the nice-to-haves. It's, it, it doesn't really know, but.
Those are have-to-haves.
Well,
Don't be shy.
I know. I hate asking if you
You've got the floor, right?
I know, but I don't ask for money. You know that.
The windows are open in the winter. You can, you can say you want, you want.
And, and another thing I want you to look at is, I, I know the intention as well when they upgraded the building. We have those benches throughout our parking lot. Some of them are practical. People do use the side of bus. So, they'll sit on them in the nice weather, wait for the bus. But they're everywhere and they're starting to fall apart. The wood's rotting, um, the base of them, they're not secure. And I know, and I don't wanna steal anybody's thunder, but I know, um, as you recall, we had a very tragic accident in our parking lot at Christmas time. Someone was killed. I know the Mass Cyclists Association is gonna be coming to you soon. They'd like to put a memorial of those bike. Um, I think by removing some of those benches that nobody ever uses in the front of the property, that would create space for that. Again, I don't wanna say too much. I don't wanna steal anybody's thunder, but I just think that's something that you need to give some consideration.
Well, you, you raised that issue and I did have a, so that's what prompted me to talk about the, uh, the legislation that just passed. I spoke with Sandy, Sandra Maderas this week, um, about that. And um, one of the things that she mentioned to me, and I wanna get your thoughts and then ultimately get our Public Safety Committee to look at is, um, you know, trucks, you, do you see trucks using the driveway as a turnaround? Things of that nature? Um, you know, I'm not there every day all the time. So, I'm just curious to get, see what's going on over there. Is it used as a turnaround?
Not to the point where it's problematic, but enough that I think it needs to be addressed. And obviously that day, and I can't talk about that accident of the crime, I'm sorry. Um, but it, obviously that day, that was
I'm just wondering if we put some sign to like, I think it'd be worth having our Public Safety Committee
I think it is, yeah.
To look at it. And if there's signage that we need to put up or even if we have to disallow it, um, because we just, you know.
And I think what happened as part of our upgrades, we, um, before you pull it to our back parking lot, you'd have to turn around in the parking lot, go out the same way you came in. But now we've opened it up on the other side of the building where you actually can just wrap around the building, which it makes that easier sometimes for trucks. And it's not just certain kinds of trucks. I mean, it's delivery trucks. It's everybody.
Right. But if it's people who are using
Yeah.
People are using the facility, that's fine.
That's fine, but not if the people who are just turning around.
But if it's becoming a place to do three-point turns and all that stuff, that's, to me, that's unacceptable.
No, and, and I think that accident in December is a perfect example of why that's not appropriate.
I don't, I don't think there's should be any tolerance for waiting for any kind of funding. I think we have plenty of money. We're talking about thirty-five million dollar budget here. I'm pretty sure that we could come up with enough money and says, no turnaround. They have signs already made. They said, no truck turnarounds, no turnarounds, whatever it may be. Figure it out and get the signs up and just make sure it's on our property because it is a state road.
Right.
But I, I think that absolutely needs to be addressed ASAP.
And I am definitely gonna ask when that proposal for that ghost bike memorial does come to you, I would love to be a part of that. Um, my staff was very affected by what happened that day.
Of course.
So, we, we're a hundred percent behind whatever they want.
Yep. Okay.
Heather, would you, uh, when we talked to the representatives, we had dollar amounts.
We did.
Can you go over those?
Okay.
So, the board understands what we asked for.
So, that was a cute conversation. Mr. Kelly said, in one minute, can you tell me how much money you want? So, this is very round figures. There are no estimates. I go, right. Um, so when we had priced out, when we replaced our air conditioning system two years ago, we had also priced out having, um, the heat upgraded or replaced. Around then, then it was around thirty-five thousand dollars. Again, that price is not gonna go down. So, I think forty thousand dollars to replace the furnaces in the attic to do it correctly would be a reasonable number. We did look at doing the mini splits, but unfortunately, the way the building was upgraded in ninety-nine, it's just all these little rooms and it, it's not practical to do mini splits.
Got it.
So, I think we kinda need to keep it the way it is.
Okay.
Um, and then it's, again, just cosmetics, like our blinds, the, the original blinds from the renovation project, they're falling down. They look, it looks terrible. So.
So, we
And then the roof. So, the roof was replaced right before I started. So, the beginning of two thousand and nine. Um, and the, the guys, Rick and, and the other guys, they've been great. They patched it, but we still have, once it rains a lot, we have leaks. So.
So, we asked for eighty thousand.
Yeah. That's where that number came from. Again, that's not with quotes or anything. That was just kind of off the top of our head.
We asked for eighty thousand, he says. We asked Rep Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, for an earmark, similar to the earmarks we got last year from Representative Schmidt.
Yeah.
And Representative Strauss.
And that's, and that eighty grand you're talking about right now is for the replacement of the heating system?
The roof.
And the roof.
Which I think is a priority. And everything that was left over for the nice-to-haves in the bathrooms, we've gotta start getting looked at too.
So, the way that would work is if Rep Schmidt is able to get in-house version of the budget, we would then ask Senator Montigny to do the same. And then if both earmarks make the way into the final budget and then the governor signs it, then we'd be able to access that.
And Rep Schmidt is doing office hours, April sixth at my place. I'm hoping it's raining. We'll put him in that room.
Yes.
Have to make some hope.
And it, it doesn't have to be, uh, the budget. It can be any one of the supplemental search deficiency budgets.
Heather, remind me. I'll get on the roof with a bucket of water and slowly go.
Yes, I'm gonna hold you there. Be careful.
I'll wear a harness. All right. Anything else, Heather?
Nope, that's it.
Well, look, keep up the great work. You do a great, amazing work over there and the, the
We've got a new group on there.
The service that you provide, um, our residents there, I think we get more than we give to you, quite frankly. Um, so we wanna make sure that you, again, you get the resources that you need. I think the challenge obviously in town is we're in a better position to handle one-time expenditures
Right.
Than we are to be able to handle
Operating
On, operating and ongoing things. But I think there's, there's clearly, there, there should be funds to take care of a, you know, a foundational piece of our town, which is the
I think for us, we've got so used to band-aiding, it's hard for us to ask.
Right. So, you gotta, you just can't be shy. So.
Yeah, but you got nice-to-have. I mean, it's not really nice-to-have. It's essential-to-have. Um, upgrade original bathroom, sinks, toilets, flooring has not been done since nineteen ninety-nine. I'm gonna say it one more time. It's one point three million dollars in free cash. And I get it, I'm not a spender by any stretch of the imagination, but when I look at the Council on Aging and I see this or I see what I see when I'm down here, you have to ask in order to get. So, you know, I'm looking at this going, what is it? Fifty, seventy-five thousand? I mean, uh, if we're putting money, you know, a hundred grand into OPEB or a hundred grand into, you know, this kind of stabilization and that's kind of stabilization, I, I'd rather take seventy-five and, and put it towards a resource of the towns where the town people get instead of sitting in a bank account on top of another three million bucks. Right? And I, I don't know if the board feels the same way, but I mean, we have, we have a duty to make sure our buildings are ready and able for the public. And, and, you know, we don't want people coming into our public buildings going, what the hell?
They walk in the men's room and make it smell
So, Heather, my colleagues are more into cars than I am, but you need new brakes and a new engine. Don't ask for floor mats.
Okay.
You know, so.
And, and I think it's important for the public to know. And again, just, I'm not a spender. But it's, it's not just the seniors visiting the building. We have the Boy Scouts and the Coast Scouts.
Yeah, a lot of stuff.
We have
We've done meetings, yeah, public meetings.
Yeah, the conservation will be there tomorrow. So, it's really, it's a resource for the whole town.
It's a shelter.
It's a shelter.
We took, we just spent, we disappropriated a hundred and twenty-five grand to create it to be a real shelter. Can we fix the rest of the stuff so it's a nice little building for everybody? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
All right.
Thank you. All right. All right. Okay, we've got, uh, item number three, combination dynamics, speed feedback and school zone speed limit sign.
I think we have this.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I think this is in here.
Put something in context over this.
There's a bunch of stuff in here, but I'm pretty sure I seen it.
All right. So, good afternoon or good evening, Chair One or Select. Um, I just wanted to kinda keep you up to date with what is going on over at the schools. Um, back in December, um, in conjunction with Safe Roads to Schools and Mass DOT, they offered a grant for these, um, combination dynamics, speed feedback and school zone speed limit sign assemblies. Uh, at that time, I reached out to the Town Administrator, the Chief of Police and the DPW to see if there were any concerns with us applying for this grant. Um, at that time, there were no concerns. So, we went right ahead and applied for it. Um, and then just this past week, we were notified that we were, um, awarded these assemblies as part of the grant process. Um, it goes right in line with the safety and security audit that we had, um, back in the summer, fall. And there were concerns about the street in front of both the schools, um, cars and the speeds that they travel, the lack of signage, um, the, the fact that the roads dashed and not even a solid line. So, it's actually a passing zone according to the, the street marks. Um, so this, this actually was one of our major concerns. And, and like I said, we jumped right on it to, to try to save, you know, money and add an asset to the town and our schools and the safety of our students.
What was the award? How much?
So, it's actually just two assemblies for the school zone. One at the beginning of the school zone, one at the end of the school zone. So, we're, we're just, they're gonna deliver these free of charge. Uh, we're responsible to get them off of the truck. And once they deliver them, we're responsible to install them within ninety days with a potential sixty-day extension.
Okay.
Um, initially, we were hoping to utilize DPW, but obviously, as you heard earlier, they have a ton of projects going on. Luckily, we have a use of facilities fund that if we need to contract out these services, you know, we're, we're gonna put that money to work. Um, because again, the importance of the safety of the students. So, there'll be a little bit more lifting on our ends, you know, trying to find a contractor to do that. Um, make sure that we're putting them in the right place, you know, with, with uh, where Mass DOT has our school zone beginning and ending. But, um, we're, we're excited for it. Um, I don't know if you particularly have any questions on the topic or concern?
No, I think it's, um, this is great. And it, it dovetails in again to the, um, pedestrian and bike safety. And, you know, I'm talking with Sandy the other day. I think this room, a lot of room to get some stuff taken care of in town. You know, like, you know, Middle Road's actually a beautiful place to walk and to ride a bike. And we don't have proper lines to delineate that and make it safer, uh, for people. So, I think that's something that we should be looking into. You know, she suggested that we create a bike pedestrian committee, you know? And so, maybe it's a combination. It's a joint effort with the school department, you know, and the school committee. Um, that we think about doing something like that and, you know, making a joint effort to, to tackle that, you know?
Absolutely.
And part of it too is, you know, the, um, the South Coast Bike Way Committee that they'll help do education in, in the schools and, you know, on, on bike safety. They got some programs that I guess might understand would be part of your gym program, like it's part of your, or health or whatever. So, there's a lot of great resources out there
like it's part of your health or whatever, so there's a lot of great resources out there that, you know, something we can think about over the summer, um, you know, when things calm down a little bit to, uh, you know, put something forward.
And just to go off of that, you know, we partnered with Safe Roads to School, which they advertise as for Mass DOT, but their focus is on walking and riding to school, you know, and our students, and they helped put together data for us, you know, based on where our population lives that attend school, and how many live so close that they'd be able to walk and ride. And we actually have a significant amount of students that could take advantage of that if we had, you know, the adequate safety on our, our middle road there. Um, and the more we participate in the Safe Roads to School program, the more opportunity we're gonna be presented for grants.
Yep.
Um, and, and, you know, infrastructure grants too, they award some communities up to one point five million dollars for some adequate sidewalks, um, and things like that, so.
Awesome.
Um, we're excited about it, and, and, you know, we're gonna continue to work with them and, you know, put our, put our hands together with them to see what we can accomplish and what we can bring to, you know, Middle Road and the school.
When do you get the signs in?
Say that again.
When do you get the signs?
Um, so actually, we just, uh, got the MOAs to sign and submit, and after that, they're gonna coordinate the shipping date and things like that, and we actually have reached out to get more info on that, to get more specifications on the units. Um, they gave us this, but it's pretty vague, um, so we just wanna make sure we have all our, you know, I's dotted and T's crossed.
So you're gonna have one on facing east side, north and south, right?
That's how I understand it, you know.
One on east side of the road?
No, one, two units, one going down Middle Road, south, and one going up Middle Road North, or whatever direction they're following.
Yeah, but does it, it flags speed, doesn't it?
It does.
So would it flag, if I'm on this side of the road heading south?
So one would be on one side and one would be on the other.
That's what I just said, but you said no.
Oh, I thought you meant two.
Now, I said one on one side of the road, one on the other side of the road.
Misunderstood.
And then you got me confused, I'm like, wait a minute.
Yeah, yeah.
So, cause of the way traffic goes, right, so that pretty much, you know, between the DPW and the Ford Middle School, you wanna get them a little early, right?
Right.
Um, and then a little bit after on the opposite side of the road.
And that's where we need, you know, a little bit of help from them or the state, uh, you know, they're gonna tell us where the school zone legally starts, and that's where we have to put these signs. Um, and from what I understand, we'll be able to toggle them on and off to only operate during school hours. There's data that we're gonna have to send the state annually about, um, what kinda speeds they've recorded, things like that, so, um, you know, we're willing to undertake it all, but we'll work with the police department.
Yeah, would they, like, like other schools, wouldn't it be like, you know, speed twenty when schools open, and then after that, you can just take them off?
Yeah, yeah, that's my understanding.
You know what I mean, so when school's session's on, they're activated, and when, you know, people go home at four o'clock or whatever, when the last person walks out the door, well, they're just shutting themselves off, right?
Right, and they're solar, um, so there's no, you know, underground wiring that we'll have to do or anything like that, and, you know, we're, again, based on my vague understanding so far of the detail is shared, you know, we'll be able to control a schedule, obtain the data, all that remote from, you know, a connection to the device.
I know, I know our DPW's busy, but I mean, it's, it's a couple of holes in the ground.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just to remind Mr. Gaspard, they're going to be on Middle Road this summer.
Lynn Allen Drive.
From DW White to Lynn Allen Drive, maybe they could coordinate.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We just need to know those zones that are defined, so that when you folks tell us where to put signs.
Yeah.
We should try to coordinate, I'm not saying, and trying to speak for Dan and his crew, cause he's got a lot of things going on, but, you know, I look at this as probably half a day's worth of work.
And we've talked to them, and I said I'd keep them in the loop either way, but all we can do is ask for open communication. If they're available, you know, we'll try to make it work, if, you know. Otherwise, like I said, we're, we're fully invested that, one way or the other, we're gonna get these three signs off.
So if you need, if you wanna figure out whatever you need to and send a communication back to the TA, um, and then he'll try to coordinate with the board, and we can try to speak with Dan, you know, thirty days in advance or whatever, and see, he'll say, hey, this is the date, once you get a date for delivery, we'll see what we could try to do, and if you already know locations, you know, we'll see what we could do to try to.
Easy enough.
I mean, it's, you know, it's a half a day's worth of work. Bore a couple of holes, put a saw and a tube in, stick the sign in there, fill it up with concrete.
Yep.
Have a nice day.
Right.
Seems reasonable.
Uh-huh.
Hang the thing the next day. Our security, you mentioned earlier, it had to be done within sixty days of the day to receive it, right?
Ninety days, we're gonna deliver it with a sixty-day extension, so essentially, between now, I expect it to have to be installed by, you know, the next school year kickoff in September, so, over the summer at some point.
So we'd try to do our best, you know.
I appreciate it.
To work. You know what I mean?
Yep.
Saves you a few bucks.
Yeah, that's exactly, and you know.
They prevail in large.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and if it's money that they need, you know, we pay out of our use facilities to them for the labor and material, and, you know, they can use that towards the roads where they need it.
We're a small town, and we've always done things the small-town way.
Okay.
Uh, we've been criticized before, um, and we're probably still being criticized by some individuals out there when we, we do shared services.
Yeah.
Um, but that's what small towns do, right? Um, you share services, it's, it's what we're all about. Um, and we're not the only ones doing that, small towns, some, for instance, another town might have certain resources that we don't have, and we have resources that they don't have, and we share that, right? We'll come in and we'll do X, Y, and Z. You give us, we put ten hours in your community, we want ten hours from your community. We, we did it with AYA, um, Lee, Dan and I did it with his brother, he had the ladder thing, or the pole thing, to put the big net up, and he came in here, spent a few days, and put the net up, and we went over there and did a little paving with him, or whatever it was, and thank you very much, nobody paid nothing, and that's the way we did business, you know, and that's kinda where I'm from, the school I'm from, is we can help each other out and save everybody a buck. In the end, we're saving our taxpayers some bucks.
That actually sucks.
Right, that's what I'm all about.
All right, um, thank you. Look, you guys have something on school solar, and there's a few other things on the agenda, I'm gonna bring that up.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So you can leave and so you don't get caught up.
My partner in this actually has to be in Townsend by seven, so.
Okay, so let's, let's get this, uh.
We're totally closed.
Let's go on for you.
All right, so, on that note, I appreciate that, I'm gonna introduce Alan Giles, Senior Business Development Manager of Select Energy. Um, we, we, come on up, Alan, sorry. We talked about this a little earlier, um, in the fall, about a potential solar project. Alan's been, you know, helping me out since then with the credits that we discussed, the Kearsage deal. Essentially, what needs to happen, or what can happen, is we can open the door for more savings for the school and the town by implementing a solar canopy project. Um, it'll provide safety and security for our students, our staff, anyone that kinda utilizes the area, reduce, you know, costs for, for snow removal, things like that, um, all of which were identified in our safety and security audit too. But on top of it, we'll be able to pass the Kearsage deal back over to the town, and they'll be able to utilize, um, the cost savings that that project has brought to schools over all these years. Um, so it'll be, you know, a twofold project where you guys save, we save, and we'll get the infrastructure. You know, at that, I'll hand it over to Alan to speak on the rest. Um, did we have the presentation on?
I think we already went through the presentation before, right, or you wanna go over?
No, it was a, it was a new presentation from Alan, I just, I didn't know if it was gonna be pulled up or.
Can we do this another time if he's gotta go?
It's all, it-
Yeah, you have, yeah, we can follow up on it.
I can quickly go through it.
Do we need an article?
Yeah, so we need an article.
That's neat to talk about too.
If we get to the money part of it, we can deal with the technical aspects another time.
Yeah, okay.
So, pretty much, we, um, Select's been a business since two thousand, not, not at Hockington, but last, uh, seven years, we've been implementing renewable energy solutions for municipalities and nonprofits under the Power Options, um, the membership program, Power Options is a nonprofit that is a buying consortium for municipalities and nonprofits. And they go up to bid, they go, they start by going up to bid for electricity, they go up to bid for natural gas. Nine years ago, they started going up to bid for solar vendors, and they go through the whole RFP process. And because they've gone through the RFP process and gone through the contract process, the town can leverage that and move forward with, um, a solar implementation. So the way it works is we actually own, we actually design, engineer, build, own, maintain, and ensure the system. And what we ask the town to do is pay for the electricity on a kilowatt base. But what we do a little bit different is we actually fix that kilowatt price in the beginning of the contract, and it stays fixed for the duration of the contract, which in this case would be twenty-five years. So the idea is that as, um, energy costs increase, the town can realize that savings, rather than paying ever-source for that electricity, it's actually paying a fixed price to us for that electricity, similar to the Kearsage plan that you have before. We have a kilowatt price based on the kilowatts committed to it. So that's kind of the high level. Um, what we did was I worked with Mr. Willeth to begin with and said, as, when we first got engaged, you were doing the new, the roof over the elementary school, and then I took a look at the roof in the middle school, and I said, probably not gonna work. And I don't feel comfortable going on a brand-new roof, you just dropped a million dollars on. And the roof that you have in the middle school is lots of different roof plates, so it doesn't really lend itself to a good solar installation. Most of our installation, actually, close to setting out and forecasted over the next two years, are solar canopies. And we've been doing that, um, the colleges, universities, both public and private, which they can certify. Um, and they do a couple of things. We're actually not cutting down trees, not going into assets, we're using assets that are in place, putting a canopy over it to, um, to put, and the canopy, the roof of the canopy is the sole panels, just like it would go on a roof. Um, but what we also did was take a look at the middle school and say, that's a shelter. And it should be able, if the electricity goes down, we should be able to make sure that that facility can operate outside of what the, um, the backup generator already does. The backup generator's basically uses fuel, and while it's running, uses the fuel. So we, we incorporated battery solution into this. Um, and the idea for the battery is first, it provides resiliency. So if the, the street goes down, ever-source does something, there's a, a major problem, um, first thing that happens is the battery takes over and provides electricity to the school, just like the generator would. But when you have traditional solar on your house or on a building, if the utility goes down, the solar system can't produce electricity. It could be a beautiful day out, the electricity's out, your solar can't work. We have a battery in place, and electricity goes out, the solar now supports the battery and feeds the battery, so that the battery can feed the school. And if at any point in time, like at night, the battery gets to a certain point, it tells the generator to kick on and fill the battery back up. So we have this redundancy of power supply coming through that building.
Can you, with the battery being at a school, how safe are these batteries?
Great question. One of my pet peeves. So you'd see, there's two different types of, there's multiple types of battery solutions.
Mm-hmm.
One that's most popular is what's called lithium ion.
Mm-hmm.
And that was designed for mobile applications. You know, for your car, for your phone, for your back, and for scooters, forever, that's what it's designed for. They took that and brought it to stationary battery solutions, in a lot of cases, it works. But what we proposed here is a solution with Milton Caterpillar that we've been working through, where it's a different type of, um, it's not lithium ion, it's lithium phosphate. And it has, it's much stable, and the history behind that solution is over thirty years old. There's install, battery installations with lithium phosphate globally, as well as with the Department of Defense. So that's the solution we wanna bring versus a lithium ion battery solution, which we've implemented at many colleges throughout Massachusetts, but we're now focused on moving towards a different.
Cause lithium is highly flammable?
It can be, just like, it's all in.
Is there a, if, if you put a storage system in place, do you have a, is there a design for containment?
It's, it's actually code now, so the container that the battery is in actually has fire suppression system in it. And it's the process of permitting this, where we're gonna work with the fire chief on this. We're gonna, before we get there, we actually review the whole plan with him for the implementation of the fire safety.
Is that something you can do as an add-on, like say, you just did the solar canopy, and we didn't do this battery backup?
Always a solution, always on.
It could be an add-on, right, so you're solar?
At a later date.
At a later date? Just because it's all new technologies, um, they have a lot of different companies, um, that do that, um, so, without lithium. So the technology's rapidly changing with battery storage?
Um, yeah, that, the problem that we have is that we have to borrow money. And the banks and the lenders want, want you to go through a certain process called the tier-one process, where they go through not only the physical nature of the asset, but the financial stability of that company. So we, in order for us to do that, we have to work with tier-one solutions. Some of the solutions that you're talking about that are out there, and I've been involved in them outside of New England in the past, like, uh, saltwater battery solutions. Um, those are not, first of all, they, they haven't gone through the UL process, they haven't gone through a lot of process. So we're looking at five, six years before we can get to that point. The problem we have in Massachusetts is that all the incentives associated with it decline. As more systems come on, the lower the incentives get. If we get out to that point in time, we could miss out on a lot of incentives.
Yeah, so when you talked about rate, you said you are responsible for the whole system, and then, say that again about us paying?
Yeah, what we do is, um, we take a look at the cost of the system under the RFP. They tell us what we can charge based on the size, the type of the system, and more importantly, they tell us how much we can make as a profit. Um, we take that, and we take all the federal incentives and all the state incentives and buy down the, and then we take the balance and amortize it out over the length of the contract.
Yeah, you put an example in there.
Right, and then what we do is we break it down into a per-kilowatt rate. Every kilowatt this system makes is based that cost. And we don't make it, we don't get paid, so that's how we, we do it. It's, we amortize it out, if it's a lot more expensive, sometimes the rate's a little bit higher, but sometimes the incentives are, are increased because we've added that system to it. I'll give you a case in point, in Massachusetts, we have what's called the SMART program. The SMART program is owned by the Department of Energy Resources, and it says, based on the size and the type of your system, what your incentive is, and then it takes the value of electricity, subtracts it, and say, okay, this is a payment that ever-source is gonna make to you every single month. We use that as income on the project, combined with the income from the payment on the kilowatts. When you combine a battery with the solar, then incentive goes up. So it'll drive, it will drive the power, the, the price per kilowatt down by adding that, those extra assets. In addition to that, the battery also helps attack a different portion of the bill called the demand charge. Demand charge says, the, the, the electricity company monitors your electricity every half hour, and it wait, and over the period, the billing period, it takes the highest use of electricity, times the tariff rate, and gives you a charge. Has nothing to do with the electricity you use, it's just a demand charge, it's the most expensive line on the bill. When you have a battery, the battery knows when you're gonna ask for a lot of electricity, so the battery turns on to provide that electricity instead of asking the grid for that electricity. So it affects the demand charge.
It stabilizes the demand.
Yeah, it's called peak-load shaving, when you have a peak load, it shaves it, so we can reduce those costs. And, and what we wanna do is share, provide those savings, the savings to the town for that. There's another program that's involved called Connected Solutions, where ever-source can actually give us a notice the day before and say, we're gonna have a, a peak-load period tomorrow at two o'clock, we'd like to use the electricity in the battery instead of asking the sandwich power plant to turn on. So they, they take the electricity from you, and they pay you hands-on for it, they pay four to five times more than what-
Who gets that money, you or us?
So we share in that.
Okay.
That part, so it helps pay for the additional cost of the battery. So all of those, we call it cost sharing, so all of the savings associated with implementing the battery, those are shared between us. Some of the choose to pay for the battery, the rest of the choose to offset your utility costs.
Exactly, that sounds really good.
I, I think it's a good idea, um, I especially think, you know, instead of putting solar projects in the woods and cutting stuff down to utilizing a parking lot's a great idea, um, not only for the safety of people walking in the parking lot, but you don't really have to damage the environment to get there. And, uh, it says it's expected to be about a million dollars of saving throughout the duration. I think that's great, and I, I, I think this is a wonderful idea.
Question for you, just one off, is it, are you capped at how many facility, you know, how many canopies you could do in a municipality? So for instance, I see our golf team, we've got a golf course.
We've been talking about this a long time.
And we've got cement, and it's a parking lot, we own it.
As Patrick has learned, my job's putting a puzzle together. I have, and ever-source is the biggest bane of my existence.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, just like.
Cause there's only so many projects, right?
And you have alluded to already.
Only so many projects in a region and-
No, it's not so many projects, it's based on the parcel.
Got it.
So it's an interconnection application to the utility. They, they say, I have one parcel, and this is why I'm, I'm going to produce enough electricity at the middle school to, to overproduce and produce enough electricity for the elementary school. So I have both system, I have both schools connected.
Got it.
So that we're providing a hundred percent offset for that. So my job is to drive the, the ever-source build down as close to zero as I possibly can, and just have, you know, one build that's fixed every single one.
So if you have a business card in your pocket, those two gentlemen right there might be interested in, in having a conversation with you offline. There, there are golf guys here, superintendent and our director?
Patrick and I were also kidding, you mentioned a canopy at the DPW parking, just bring them over to middle school, they can park on the.
Well, there you go, I mean.
Yeah, and we, I do that a lot, I do that a lot at DPWs where we're building canopies.
That's another great idea, right, I mean, that's what, that's what you get out of conversations, right? You just keep pitting on all different things, and we're talking school right now, but, you know, we may be able to utilize the solution other places.
So what, um, Mr. Kelly was talking about is our agreement.
So what Mr. Kelly was talking about is our agreements. There's, there's three agreements in this, in this case. One agreement is the power purchase agreement, which Mr. Kelly or the superintendent can sign. But the second part is a license to only operate the asset on town property, and that requires town meeting vote to give you and the town manager position, permission to enter into, negotiate and enter into agreement for a long-term set of license. The third part is that.
Patrick, I want to get you out of here because I know.
No, 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 I have all the time in the day. That's the reason why we're here, is so that we can, so that we can get this project into the article for intent to enter into an agreement.
This is my time of year where I'm going through town.
All right, that's fine. Absolutely. All right, thank you for your time, though.
So, I believe we already sent language that we've used at other towns up to Mr. Kelly considering for the one.
A lot to digest, but we can, we can read through it, and Patrick can keep us in the loop and figure out what we need to do.
Thank you so much for your time. If you have any questions at all, send right to Patrick, he's got a direct line to me.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so on that note, do we need a formal, I guess I'm asking you guys, do we need a formal book to be able to add this to the article?
Submit it and review with all the other articles.
All right, well, thank you all for your time anyway, you know.
We wanted to make sure the board had a briefing on this separate from the war.
Yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate that he's got to fly, and we've had, we've had a lot of other things on the discussion. But, you know, the breakdown, the way it looks, it's great, we're just, it's always, again, when we're going to town meeting, to give as much information to the, to the people out there to attend and be educated on it, so that we're not doing all of this at town meeting, because we have so many other things to do at town meeting. You stay on one conversation for an hour, right? I mean, this is the time to vet it out, and, you know, maybe when we have a little more opportunity to lighten the agenda, and we could have you come back in and maybe do this presentation on the screen.
Yeah, and we'll have a rendering, things like that.
You know what I mean? Yeah, exactly. And show the people what this little canopy looks like, and, you know, I mean, that's really what it's all about. I mean, we're trying to sell a product. And the more information we have about the product, the easier it is to sell, right?
Awesome. Thank you, Mike, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. All right, yeah, so next item on the agenda is getting at the legislative breakfast I was at a couple weeks ago, Selectman Espandola from Frehaven is leading a regional broadband effort. It looks like the town of Frehaven is exploring the possibility of providing broadband, you know, general broadband for residents and what have you. I didn't know much about it, other than he asked for our consideration to look into it and, you know, to be part of the discussion. So I told him that I would bring it back to the board and, you know, there was an opportunity to at least listen and attend a meeting. We had a briefing from Selectman Espandola, he could even come in and give us a briefing, but I knew that, like, Nick and Mr. Duarte, if there's any member of the board who had an interest in this.
Is this, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, is this a supplement to Comcast, for instance? This would be an option for our residents to actually have a different option?
Yep, yep, yep. So I don't, again, I know everybody's got a lot on their plate.
I'm all in on that one. Well, it depends on how much we need to rewire the town, but Comcast's out of control, yeah. Out of control, we're slicing.
I think the residents of the town have been asking for options for years, and we've kind of been limited to what we could do. And I think any option we can put on the table is a good one.
All right, so if the board is okay with it, we'll invite Mr. Espandola in, and he can brief us, and then we can, in the meantime, we can think about, you know, we can talk to our cable committee or figure out, put together a working group. It'd be great if a member of the board got involved in that, that'd be great. So we can just kick that around, and Mr. Kelly, if you'd reach out to Angie, and I'll reach out to Mr. Espandola and get him on the agenda for our next meeting, just to come in and talk to him. All right, next item, ASME Senior Clerk, I think that was you, Mr. Hinckley?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As per our last discussion at our last meeting, Mr. Kelly and I worked together to dive into some classification questions, and we came basically to the conclusion that the clerk position is redundant and really doesn't fit the mold of the town anymore. It was very antiquated, and there wasn't much difference between clerk and senior clerk nominally wise. So I asked Mr. Kelly to put together an MOA, and if you guys want to review that, so you can read what it's about, basically, essentially, it'll break it down by date and change classifications from employees that are at clerk right now to senior clerk. And we reviewed it with the ASME union rep Scott this morning, and they were okay with it, and a few gentlemen are okay with it. I support this personally, but once again, I'm only one member of the board.
So when, when, when I looked at some of the language, it just, it says, talks about steps in how they moved around, that's all as far as a year's of service, right? So that wouldn't change?
It's where they are in the clerk rating with years of service versus where they would be in the senior clerk, because we had to clarify in our discussions with the union, because it is a reclassification, not a promotion.
Yeah, no, I understand, but it still stays the same. So if you're in step three, you're just going to step three senior clerk, no?
Because the way it happens, most of the people are either in step four or step five right now. And so they go, and this takes place in the next fiscal year. So when we looked at it, they all would be in the certain step.
It's all the same, though. It's all the same. Look, I mean, you know, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
You know, you know, I commend Selectman Hinckley for actually looking at this. We've had some situations with different employees. I'm glad that he's grabbed the bull by the horns and said, there's enough of this, and tried to finally finalize different things with grievances and the like with some of our employees. So if this is going to be beneficial to help ease that, you know, grievance issue off, off the town, I'm all for it. I commend you in your efforts, Mr. Hinckley, diving into this project in a short amount of time that you've been on the board, to jump into a labor issue and actually providing a resolution to the board in a very expedited timeframe. Kudos to you.
Thank you. It all comes down to, you know, really showing some appreciation to the employees that we have here, and this particular situation does pretty much resolve our grievances that we've had in the past, so.
Make a motion to approve.
And I thank Mr. Kelly for putting this together as quick as we needed to happen.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, second, as presented. One second, just the, again, I think, you know, the money's de minimis, but what you think, what you said is really most important, is recognizing the work that people are doing, whether you're a town or municipal employee, you work in the private sector.
Yep.
To be, to have your title reflect your responsibility and, you know, you know, what you do, I think is appropriate, so thank you.
The motion should reflect that way, the board will approve it after the union signifies their approval and will receive a signed document.
So a motion to approve contingent upon union approval and signature.
So moved.
Thanks.
All right, all those in favor?
And ultimately, it's going to be ratified by town meeting again, right? Is that waiting for budgets?
No, it's a settlement of agreements.
Oh, okay.
So next year's budgets have been.
The increases in?
Increased, and Nick has presented you with the new budgets.
Yeah, as Mr. Lona said.
It's $4,700.
Peanuts.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Selectman Hinckley.
You're welcome.
Thank you for supporting.
Yeah, absolutely, good work. All right, the next issue, a little bit of a dicey one, it's a notice of appeal filed by Deep Brook Estates. And it appears that there's an issue before the Conservation Commission. So if there's representatives from Deep Brook Estates, I'm going to make the point to not get into names, you know, just like talk about the project.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I purposely try to avoid getting into names.
Yes.
However, I've asked.
But you can tell it's yours if you want.
I will in a second. Joe Costello, the son of the manager of Deep Brook Estates LLC, is handing out a, it's somewhat ironic, we're in a, dealing with Conservation Commission, we cut half a tree for sure.
Sorry to see that.
Well, my name for the record is Armin Fernandez. I'm an attorney with offices in Ubedford. I represent Deep Brook Estate LLC, and as I said, Mr. Costello. It is, if I say this, we assume we're trying to curry favor of some kind, but I want to thank you for the prop scheduling of this meeting. Under the bylaws, and I've given you at least 2021 exhibits, I'm not expecting you to have to read them. It's my understanding by the amendment to bylaw made at the town meeting in June of 20, that you have 15 days to make a response. We had 15 days to appeal from the decision that is listed as Exhibit 1 in your package. And that is, we argue that the conservation agent issued a cease and desist order, and we say that is, to use a fancy term, altruism, means he has no authority to do it beyond his authority. And secondly, if he has authority, it's been arbitrarily and capriciously and recently enforced. Now, I don't suspect you get many of these. Why I prepared that record for you is to make an administrative record in the event we had to do anything else. In addition, and getting back to the timeline, we had 15 days to request an appeal of the order selection. The orders that was issued were issued on the 9th and the 10th. As was pointed out, and to be fair and for purposes of completion, there is a Conservation Commission tomorrow to discuss the cease and desist order issued by the agent, which we believe, again, is illegal, inappropriate. Now, by definition, agent means you work for somebody else. And in this case, we're going to point to Chapter 131, Section 40, which is the Wetman's Law, Wetman's Act. Their regulations apply to some degree, and they are in the CMRs, specifically CMR 310, Section 10. It's got a lot of stuff, it's about that thick, didn't give it to you, but I will call and ask that you take, again, administrative notice of Section 10.08, which deals with the right of a conservation member, an agent, to take emergency action. We argue that there was no need for an emergency here. What I think's happened, and if you were to look and read of the meeting of March 8th, which is the day before this cease and desist order was issued, you'd find that the agent was clearly upset that Mr. Costello began and had previous few months requested for records and information. Why is that? Why did he question, and why was it seemed to be frivolous, and there were allegations made in the minutes concerning things such as trying to get away with something, not complying with regulations, seeking to do something that you're not entitled to? Well, first of all, I think, I feel compelled to tell you, you probably know a lot about Mr. Costello. He's been a town resident for all his life, he has two homes here, his children went to school here, his children live here, and I could probably throw a stone to the church he goes to from where we are here today. That doesn't entitle him to any break, doesn't entitle him to violate any of the laws. He's not from out of town, he's not a criminal, he drinks with the same water we all do here. The fact of the matter is, all he wants is to have an equal right and the right to exercise his right under the rule of law, which I suspect if we follow it, you will find that in fact the acts were not fair, not reasonable, and against what are your rules and regulations. In your package, you are going to find Exhibit 2, and it's made up of A, B, C, and D. A is the first time, Appendix 9 was added to your general bylaws. It is the stormwater bylaw. It was amended on two occasions by town meeting, in 20, June of 2020, and again in May of 2021. There was an attempt in May 9th of '22 at your town meeting to amend it. Interestingly, the other two amendments I suggest to you only took and added to what was the Article 9 approved in '07. When you look at the one that was last year, and I'm not getting involved with it too much, because it really doesn't matter, and you've been here a long time, and, you know, I know you don't need me or any other lawyer to harangue you at this point, but the bottom line, if you look at that, that takes out the old one and tends to, tries to put something else in. What does it really try to do? It attempts to remove the planning board as being the stormwater agency, the stormwater board. I say to you today that the board is not the Conservation Commission, it is the planning board. If you listen to the minutes in the meetings, there's a suggestion that, well, no, the planning board has given it up. It's really not, it's not. Well, if it was not, you wouldn't have tried to amend it in 2022, and I suspect, and I haven't looked at the 2023 town meeting proposal, but I'll bet you there's an, there's an attempt to change that and correct it. Now, there's no doubt that the planning board said, and this is a result of a request of the Building Commissioner in 2021 late, and then, and a vote to ask the town planner to prepare a warrant for the '22 meeting, to change from planning board to conservation. Now, let me say this, and I don't, not being critical of it, COVID, any other number of reasons, try to find your town records. Find out, for example, which is one of the questions Mr. Costello asked, tell me, when did you adopt your stormwater regulations? Because the only copy he gets, and it's, it's part of, I believe it's Exhibit 21, the last part, I just didn't include all of it, you'll find it was adopted at blank date of blank blank. You don't know if you ever did. Maybe you did, maybe the town did approve it, but where is it? And we are a government of laws and rules. Costello and anyone else should be able to come in and find out what it is he has to do. And he shouldn't, like anyone else, be told, you don't like what I say, appeal for the selection, or, as he did, not in Mr. Costello's case, but on the same day, in the same hearing, suggested pursue your engineer, because apparently it was in the opinion of the agent at the time, that the engineer had made an error. Maybe he was right. Now, there's an expression here all the time, power corrupts absolute, power corrupts absolutely. Now, corruption, I'm not talking about dishonesty, dishonesty here, but corruption in the sense of rust, in the sense of eating away at something. And I'm suggesting to you, in the manner in which these votes and these actions are being taken, we're corrupting the rule of law, corrupting the system the way it should be run to be fair, and enforce the laws, which are very important. This Wetman law is not insignificant, and, and I know you've had occasion to deal with it before. Bottom line, there is no authority because there was no emergency on the, I'd like to tell you to listen to the, there's no transcript right there, there is no written minutes for the March 8th meeting, where the agent says, I am going to revoke or call back my provisional appointment that I gave you back in August of '22. And the reason? Because you've been delaying this, you're, and suggesting ulterior purposes. Now, all of that other stuff in there about what happened in September of '21, I was right there, September of '17, has to deal with things that went before Mr. Costello bought this project, and by the way, he spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in it. Why would he want to screw it up? Why would he deliberately go out there knowing that the conservation agent is examining everything he does, deliberately try to delay his project, the contractors he has, and the use of his money? There's no rational basis for it, other than he asked, tell me where it is that I must do this. Example, apparently, the storm regulations, if they exist, the stormwater regulations, if they exist, deal with peer review. So Mr. Costello says, okay, I'd like to have two. Immediately, there's a suggestion at the meeting, well, you're trying to get cheap, you want to buy something, it has nothing to do with price. You want to buy something. It had nothing to do with price. Mr. Costello's never asked why he did that. He wanted to see whether or not what was being proposed was going to be the best deal for his project. But no, it's construed to be as trying to take advantage, trying to take a shortcut. Cost him $4,000 to do that, and he did. But he had questioned earlier, and if you look at the, and I hate to take your time, but I'm going to point it out to you. If you look at the meetings of September, October, and November of 2017, you're going to find that the engineer for the previous owner is telling us there was peer review. There were at least two for that project. In addition, there is another provision that points out that the quality of water, which is something you have to get and is demanded now by the agent, was previously submitted. Well, we can't find those records. You're not the only one. Deep Department of Environmental Protection can't find the meter. We've asked for them. There's a reference, there's a number for the particular project. They can't find that project. And it's referenced in your meetings of September, October, and November and December of 2017. So ultimately, what, look, it's understandable, and I'm trying to cut this short quite frankly for you. A member of the Conservation Commission, assuming they have the authority, and I'll assume for purposes that somewhere, there's a letter, there's a vote, there's a meeting, that town planning board says, I delegate the power that's in the planning board to you, Conservation Commission. I can't find it. I don't think anyone else is going to find it because I don't think it happened. What I submit is that it's assumed that's what happened. And then based on that, conservation, everyone's been working on it. But maybe by default, you can argue by implied implication, there's some way that you can baptize that. Okay, so let's assume that the Conservation Commission has implied authority to do it. Well, there's a law of agency. When I was a puppy lawyer, and that was a long time ago. I was a puppy a long time ago. I can tell you that there was a course called Agency. They don't teach it anywhere in law school. They teach it in different ways, bit by bit, but it was a course of agency. I hated it. But the one, first thing you learn, this is kind of dope. The first thing you learn is that delegated authority can't be delegated without certain exceptions. You need the written authorization. So if I'm delegating it to you or to you, you can do it. But if you're going to give it to him, him, and her, you had better put it in writing and have the authority ultimately to do it. There is no authority for anything that happened with Mr. Costello. Now, the conservation agent recognizes the limitations on his authority. He really does. Because there's a vote in there where he asked the Conservation Commission to give him, quote unquote, limited authority to do certain things administratively. Okay, cutting the trees. Okay, utility poles. Okay, issuing order of certificates of compliance for purposes who want to buy or sell land. By the way, the chairman says, yeah, I think that's a good idea. But they never vote on it. There's no vote. There's an opinion, that's a good idea, but there's no vote. Maybe by, again, implication, it's okay, and maybe he's done that. But there's never, never, never given him an authority to do some of the things he's demanded of Mr. Costello. Now, you have 15 days to make a decision. I can't tell you what to do or not to do, other than I recommend, based on everything you'll see in there if you read it, that the authority that was exercised was, in fact, ultra virus. Fancy word for without authority. The emergency that I taught you about, that a commissioner or an agent can walk onto your land, and boy, that's important sometimes, and you can't get to a meeting. They have a right to do that. And they have a right to say, here, stop. Cease and desist. You're violating the Wetland Protection Act. And by the way, I'm not suggesting that this particular agent does not believe he is not acting within the scope of his authority. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that his authority is not as great as he thinks it is. But anyway, getting back to the regulation, and that's in that 310 CMR, Section 10.08. You have a right to do that. But you're going to go back and baptize it. You have to get okay. You just can't do it on your own. And by the way, if you read 2D, you read the suggested, what they wanted to do in that particular proposal that was tabled, so far it's not law today. They want to substitute everything and put that in. And it was not until the 2020 amendment to your town meeting that you complied, in my view, with due process. Because for the first time, you said, hey, notice. We ought to give somebody notice. And, you know, if there's a violation, well, maybe we're going to give them an opportunity to be heard. The 2020, that was in the 2020. What I saw in the proposed D, and again, it's not before you because it's not the law, in it, they don't do that. And that 2020 does a lot of things. It gives the Conservation Commission, or the agent, the power to do and make a decision without the baptism that I told you about, and ultimately fine it. $300 a day, up to thousands of dollars? Look, that's not my position. But if I were a member of this community, I'd be concerned about it. And I might be unfair and wasting your time talking about it because I haven't seen what really is going to be proposed. And I don't live in this great, great town of Kuschna, which, by the way, I play in that golf course, and I'm a lousy golfer. And I love Titleist a lot because I lose a lot of golf balls. But that's another story. Okay. Bottom line, it's too long for me. It's too long.
Get off the ladies, please.
You don't work. I'm embarrassed to do this. I'll tell you one story. You don't want to really get involved with this. I thought I hit the ball longest drive, 10 yards from the longest drive. It went up, and it was Mary somebody running. So that'll tell you why I don't really, I'm not that good, and I'm sorry for taking your time to tell you that. But the outline, there's an exhibit timeline to every one of the meetings I have. If you read those and you understand what I suggested about the emergency powers and allowing the agent or a member of the commission to do that, I think you'll find that overreacting couldn't do it. And it's not right. I mean, make a decision, but let's not, the people who come before this commission, the people who invested in their homes, they're on all developers. The people who have want to improve it and have to come because of the wetlands law. They're entitled to be listened to with respect. They can be abused because they disagree with an action of taking or not taking. That March 8th, no, there are no minutes of it, but I took a transcript off the, from the Zoom, if you will, or the YouTube that the town employed, and if you look at, I took snippets of it. In fact, I had snippets going way back to 2021 involving, well, strike that, '22, when Mr. Costello got involved with this. He bought this in January of '22. He assumed he bought all the permits. Everything was passed. And then he told, he asked him to list that and the other. And I'm the guy to send him off on the march to get the records. Go to, and by the way, every one of these people, every one of your staff, the clerks, the, in the, no matter what department. The town clerk, nice lady. Conservation commission, very nice lady. That's how Mr. Costello addressed them. I said, well, Joe, they're not going to be happy going there and asking for them. But there were accusations that, you know, he's taking up their time. He asked four hours of getting copies of records. Well, there really wasn't four. And how about this? There are violations up there with EPA. Well, this agent brought EPA down to look, unannounced, which is fine. You cannot announce that you're in violation of an EPA regulation publicly and suggest that you're trying to get away with something and not have a guy like me standing up yelling ouch. It's not fair. It shouldn't happen. Because maybe EPA will come down tomorrow. But in February, they came in 16, unannounced. They asked for certain records to be produced. They were produced. And to this day, no ouch from them. They haven't said anything was wrong. Now, this particular agent should be congratulated, if you will, for allowing Mr. Costello to do work on the road, which is that when he gave his, if you will, on August 16th, he gave his provisional approval. The Conservation Commission has had this on its menu, if you will, at every one of its meetings. Every one since August. It's been on all the time. So there's no emergency suddenly because he asked his secretary, or he claims, the agent claims that, in fact, his secretary was occupied four hours, only works part-time, and couldn't do any other work because he made the request. And I'm going to take action and revoke my provisional appointment. One of the members on the commission says, do we vote on this? No, I'm going to do it. Well, agent, work for somebody else. May have some rights, but we're still a rule of law. And in this case, it didn't happen. It wasn't properly administered. So thank you for your time. I've cut this back a lot. I've given you a lot of record in there. And I would hope that you support Mr. Costello in his appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, attorney. And a couple of things. One, your opening remarks. I concur with everything you said about Mr. Costello and his family. Top, top-notch people. Great people. And so for that, Joe, please, you know, bring that back to your mom and dad. I've known them for a while. They're just great, great people. So for that, I know there's been some, when you're in a public domain, things, you know, things get said or whatever. So I just want you to know, for me, I'm sure the board feels the same way about you and your family. So.
Mr. Chairman, Joe Costello, you know, he's not asking for anything other than giving you a fair break.
Understood. Okay.
And then secondly, you know, recognizing, you know, the issue here. Wanted to get it on the agenda right away. You know, I'd like the opportunity to digest all of this. I don't know that we're here prepared to make any decision this evening, but wanted, you know, confer with town council. Gentlemen.
I'd like to read through this as well.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot there on 15 days with everything else that's going on. I don't know what the response is. I think that this is already in town council's hands.
I don't know. I do know this, that town council only gets things when you go through the town administrator, at least that's the bylaw I read. And by the way, I've learned a lot about your bylaws, but I don't know who authorized that. I've noticed in reading some of these minutes that town councils often brought in. I suppose you get the bills eventually, but, because, you know, this is not a hobby.
Mr. Fernandez is very familiar with municipal government. He was solicitor in Bedford.
Yeah, I've done a few things in my life. I'm being bored plenty. My first day on the job as city solicitor, as city in Bedford, we got sued by the EPA for $250 million, $25,000 a day, for not building a secondary treatment plant, which is now at Fort Rodman. That was my first job as a city solicitor, but I've done a few other things.
So, Mr. Fernandez, you brought in, and I didn't realize it. We're limited on what we have in our book for information, and I've read the letters. And I know MS-4 permitting is a very sticky conversation with everybody because everybody's so used to coming in, and no matter whether it's at Kuschna or any municipality and building developments, and who cares about stormwater? But guess what? EPA or DEP care about stormwater. We have an MS-4 permit as a town. I keep saying this. It's a huge adjustment for a lot of people that are in the construction business, as Mr. Costello is. We've had that bylaw since 2007, was never really enforced. I'll go on record as saying that. And that was kind of me blowing that up, saying that this needs to be done because we have an MS-4. I was technically not threatened directly by a DEP person, but when I asked the question of what happens if we don't do a new stormwater bylaw, they said you will be fined as a municipality, tens of thousands of dollars if you don't do it. So that was that conversation. I still have an email trail for that one with that individual from DEP, and that scared the hell out of me. And we've done some updating on stormwater. Nobody likes it. I don't personally like it. But it's there, and it's compliance is compliance. And it doesn't matter who you are, how well you're known. We, the town, have to do it. We're doing, we're looking at a Slocum Street project over here. It's considered a redevelopment project, and we have to do our best to manage stormwater before you discharge it into the river. I get it. I'm familiar with a friend of mine right here in town that just put, he had intentions of doing a lot more than what he, when he put it on plans. He had intentions of doing a lot more of a development. And then he found out how much stormwater was going to cost him, which was in hundreds of thousands of dollars, and he backed off enormously on his project. Said, you know what? I'm not doing that. I'm just going to do the little building out front and have a nice day, and that still costs that person tens of thousands of dollars. And I'll be quite honest with you. I'm very familiar with the site. It is the most erroneous stormwater erosion control plan I've ever seen in my life, where water's going here, going there, going up there, coming back in the other direction with all this. But it's requirements, not that the town's trying to force so much. It's DEP and EPA, it's regulations, and we're stuck to it. And that's what I really read in here was some of the things that was talked about here that the agent had said for cease and desist. It's mostly stormwater related that I have here, not this big, huge thing that you talked about. And I'm familiar with a lot of this stuff. And there is, this is all things that need, everyone needs to comply with. To what level of compliance? Look, nobody's exempt 100%. And there's some room for variations from certain things, and as long as you make faithful attempts and all that good stuff in the regs. But.
Selectment Gaspard, Mr. Costello is not asking to be exempt from anything that the statute does not allow him to be exempt from. He's just saying, hey. And by the way, what'd you say about people doing what they wanted to do? There's a minute of the meeting, which I didn't produce in there. I think it was January of '23, where there was criticism with the planning board was suggesting that, you know, you can do what you wanted to do. Now, I don't know if that's true or not. That's not what Mr. Costello is here to say. And he is not trying to not comply with what's in there. He just wanted to know, where's the authority to have it applied to me in the way it's being applied? Now, the provisional appointment was to work in the streets that already been cut in there by the previous developer and do certain things, not to go into the wetlands. So we're not asking, and I don't want, maybe I failed in my attempt to try to convince you that the cease and desist had anything to do with an attempt to get some exemption to a stormwater regulation. That's not the case. We've been complying and trying to comply with it. The peer review came in on the, there's an argument that, well, you're delaying everything. Well, the peer review was issued around November 9th. The report only came back in on February, these are, they're in there, February 12th or 16th.
You're talking 2022 to 2023?
Now, for now. So November of '22 to now. And then Mr. Costello at the meetings accused of delaying things for some nefarious reason. And that's not fair.
Right.
And it's not the reason it happened. His engineer, and I have Mr. Gabby here, who could attest to that, but we're not going to do that, where that Zenith has received on the February 16th a report. And this is an example of what I call capricious, arbitrary action. In the minute of February, the meeting comes before the board in February.
22.
Mr. Rennie is there, and he's got now, he's received the, what you call the peer review by Beeland Thompson, another engineering firm the town hires to go out and see if this project's right. Now, Mr. Rennie stands, Rennie stands up there and says, look, we're going to answer him. We're working on it. Well, how much time do you need? He's given until March 22nd to be able to get it done. If you look at the March 10 letter that you have, and it's in the last thing when it's in there. But I can tell you what it says. It says, you provide operation and maintenance results by, according to the agent, March 17th. So Mr. Costello moves his engineers, Zenith Engineering, to go out and filed it, and they filed it by the 17th. Then there's a request made, okay, we filed it, can you lift the cease and desist? The answer is not only no, I'm going to go by and have them dismiss or declare or deny your stormwater permit. Now, is that arbitrary? He'd been given until the 22 to do it. He then demands, because he's angry now based on whatever happened on that minute of the March 8th, and he draws, he doesn't remember that he already said at a meeting that's taped, because you haven't got the minutes for that either, but we give you those, that you got until the 22nd to do it. What happened is, we filed them on the 17th. So, I mean, I just, and I don't, again, I'll assume that this agent is functioning because he believes it's in the best interest of the town and in the best interest of compliance with the Wetlands Act and your regulations. Mr. Costello is saying, I looked for your regulations, I can't find them. And maybe I will look at what wetland protection says you can do and cannot do, but you ain't doing it right. You know, and I'm not trying to say you're corrupt in a sense of some dishonesty. I'm just saying, I'm entitled to know what my thousands of dollars are going to. So there's not an attempt, Mr. Gaspard, I apologize if I misconstrued your statements. There's not an attempt by Costello to try to defeat and not comply with the stringent stormwater regulations, which are implemented by the town, but we can't find. They are overseen by the wetlands.
So let me just ask you this question, because I know there's a lot of issues concerning MS4 and stormwater permits from not only this one, but multiple people, right? It is very convoluted. I've read the handbook.
Congratulations. That's like reading the Bible.
It's horrible, my friend, it's horrible, okay? But I'm very familiar with, I even wrote standard nine when it says about the operational and maintenance thing. I know that's standard nine in the handbook and everything else. So there's truth behind a lot of things that are said, and from what I see, the problem is just trying to discover where we're at with the applicant, the commissioned. And apparently a cease and desist was put on because you haven't been in compliance with stormwater. That's what it seems like. And you're saying that this gentleman from Zenith gave a stormwater plan to Conservation for that?
The stormwater petition was filed on November 6th of.
Okay, so then what happens after you're an applicant's engineer draws up a stormwater plan for that development, then the commission sends that out to peer review to make sure things are accurate and it's functioning right and everything's copasthetic with the other. That's what peer engineers protects the town, right?
I want to be fair to the agent. He said that petition should have had an O and M in it. However, you shouldn't, well, other communities, all, we have these laws, it's like in, we have so far uniform laws in the law. Well, they ain't uniform. And they don't, oh, I shouldn't say, but they're not uniform, they're not applied uniformly. In this case, he said you didn't give me an O and M. Do you want to answer that, Rennie?
Well, I can just say one thing. So the plans were not drawn by us. They were drawn by GAF Engineering back in '17, when they were approved by Planning, GAF Conservation. Those plans actually have O and M. The O and M plan is on the actual plans, but one of the comments that came in was they wanted a separate document. And that's common, we do that for most projects, where you have a separate, just like, almost like a little book that someone who is going and doing inspections and maintenance, they have a little book that they can flip through and see, you know.
It's the operations and maintenance of the detention basins, correct? And that usually requires a surety to be placed.
Right, so the plans themselves did have O and M language on the physical large plans. And one of the comments that came back from the peer review was that they wanted, they said that we should provide, and he was right, we should provide a separate document. So, I mean, the O and M was there. Maybe it wasn't presented in the right way, but again, it was all part of that previously approved.
So you weren't the designer of stormwater?
Correct.
Engineering, it was GAF?
Correct.
Back in 2017. And peer reviewed Beals and Thomas, that the commission had a peer review. They peer reviewed GAF's 2017?
Correct.
And what were the findings from Beals and Thomas for stormwater? Was it clean, or did they say this doesn't meet spec? You need to do X, Y, and Z additional things? And then you got involved? Or is it just, yep, we're satisfied with GAF's 2017 stormwater plan? We're good to go, other than the operational and maintenance part of, you know, the 20-year plan, 25-year?
They did have additional comments, design issues, if you will, that they felt that should have been, should be addressed.
And then you re.
We're still actually working on that right now. So we're working with a plan that's from another engineer who's no longer involved with the project.
Sure.
So, and we don't have all their original documents. So we're trying to almost supplement what they did. But in that process, we have to almost reconstruct what they did. And then, and then make the changes that Beals and Thomas is looking for.
So I remember Mr. Costello coming into this board. And I was, I think I was chairman at the time, right?
Yeah, I remember that.
And we gave them, you know, the permission to lay water pipes and things of the like through the roadways and clear the roadways, right? And then I guess that might be some conditional thing that maybe the commission took up. But we said, you know, yeah, we don't have a problem with you going in and, you know, doing the road, opening the, you know, the roadways further and putting water infrastructure in. That's our forte, we're watering sewer commissioners. But, you know, that was the extent of our approval, was to get in there because that's when, you know, you start really triggering stormwater, right? You know, heavy house site that you put in, it's all part of that stormwater planning. So quite honestly, I'm barred from my household from watching Channel 18 because if I watch it, I lose my mind and I have to try to go to the meetings and yell and scream. And so I did it once a while back on a FinCon meeting, and my dear wife said to me, you're no longer allowed to watch Channel 18. And I said, okay, after that event. So I try not to do it because sometimes things drive me crazy with what people say. But, you know, I'm not that familiar with all of these meetings. But, you know, I think it's just waiting, I don't know. I mean, I'm familiar with the project, I've been down there myself. I know the individual that's doing the work. So, you know, I go down there to see how things are progressing and things of the like and shoot the breeze with them. And he's basically saying, so they're redoing plans. You haven't done anything really additional to the lands, other than putting in water pipe that I'm aware of. Is that fair to say? And you've been halted through a cease and desist to stop work because your plan hasn't been submitted yet and then peer reviewed? Or you're, Beals and Thomas found problems with GAF, and you're trying to correct those problems and resubmit it on an engineered plan now through your office, through Zenith?
Correct.
And then Beals and Thomas will look at it and just go, everything's good to go. They covered all of our concerns, everything's good, and then you're moving. Is that fair to say, where we're at, in a nutshell?
That's a fair assessment of it, but there are nuances in every one of them. For example, you mentioned water quality. There is, in back then, we can look at records in 2017, as I pointed out to you, to say that this water quality was done and approved by DEP. It's all in there.
Oh, I don't know anything about, I don't know anything about water quality.
And if you look at the cease and desist, or when he issues the provisional appointment, he says you're also going to do this, A, B, C, D, E, and he mentions SWP, S-W-P-P-P.
SWP, yeah, that's stormwater prevention.
Stormwater protection plan, which has been done, okay? He mentions other things that are not necessarily yet, notice of intent for houses. Well, that's not done until we know where the houses are going to go and you do all those calculations for rain and other things. But I didn't want to burden you with all of that. What I'm saying is, to stop what he was doing based on the way in which and why he stopped it, he had no authority to do it. Okay, the Conservation Commission may have authority to do it, but we haven't heard that yet. But the other thing, well, I think you understand it, and I don't want to burden you with it anymore.
I think as a, you know, as a governmental body, it's a ConCon Board of Selectmen, we got to make sure that the goalposts stay straight throughout the whole process, right? We can't be moving the goalposts around. We've got, we're going to be meeting in 14 days. We've got 15 days to look at this. So I'd like to do, as I mentioned, I don't think we're prepared to make a decision this evening, but we'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting. I know you guys are going before Conservation tomorrow, correct?
Tomorrow, 6 o'clock.
So hopefully there'll be some resolution before that, but if not, we will.
Well, if there is, and if it's not necessary to come back, I'd be happy to notify.
At a minimum, you'll know that this, if it's not resolved, we'll take it up. But I'm hoping it will be resolved in the appropriate body because they're the experts. But again, for what it's worth, we'd like to see the clear path, a pathway, because that's the fair thing to do.
And I appreciate that. I just would say that all people, meaning government and public, would benefit by a set of records and all these issues, all these departments was accurate, located someplace centrally and easily accessed, and most importantly, accurate. I don't believe, and I understand this, look, Freddie Soar was, I used to love Freddie Soar. He beat me up playing basketball. He's a very generous man. He gave substantial money to Providence College to get us an auditorium named after him. And he was a prominent citizen of this community, okay? And his attitude always was, look, we live in a small community. We understand, nobody's trying to hurt anybody, we're going to help you. And I think the small community argument that was made earlier is pointed to a lot of what happened before. Now, you're right, you get the federal government, you get the state agency all over here. And when we go back to try to find out what are the rules of engagement, we really can't find them. And somewhere along the line, I think that's going to have to either forward and maybe a little bit back to find a place where we can get all those records. I just gave you a few.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I've heard a lot about you.
I don't believe it.
You know, everything I heard, you confirmed your attention to detail, your brilliant mind. It was a pleasure, and thank you for being here.
No, no, you haven't talked to my wife.
You've been a public servant your whole life, and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Gentlemen, if we could just take a brief recess, going on a little bit. Just take a five-minute recess. Motion to recess. Five minutes in favor. All right, we are back. There's a motion to reopen the meeting.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All right, so we did school solar. So now we're going to get into the budgets. Mr. Kelly, take it away.
Mr. Chairman, the folks from the golf courts are here. I would suggest that if you have questions of them and their budget, you do it now, and then we can get out of here because Steve always tells us he's in at 5:00 in the morning.
It's always better to have meetings.
You said, once we do golf, we can get out of here?
He can get out.
Oh, man.
All right. Gentlemen, I've looked at this upside every which way. Mr. Gaspard, Mr. Hinckley.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? I did watch your meeting the other night, and I appreciate you guys doing the veterans pricing and town employee pricing. The one concern I have is the assistant superintendent increase, simply because I think you had that conversation between Mr. Isaac and Mr. Tibbles, whether or not it's a union or a non-union position. I personally don't feel comfortable voting that until we get 100% clarity from our town council because I don't want to walk into a situation where he isn't named on this list, but is on this one. And I haven't received that list yet of what personnel is going to be in the union. I don't have a problem with it per se at all. I just don't want to set the town up for failure in the future.
No problem.
I concur with that statement. Because of the new union, I have some documentation that doesn't specifically mention, but the other documentation surrounding that kind of leaves it wide open. So I would feel, as Mr. Hinckley just noted.
Yeah, it's fine with me. That was entered at the last, at the last committee meeting. And as Selectman Gaspard mentioned, the preamble to the, it's my understanding, preamble to the list of positions included in this new union incorporates that particular position without actually stating it, and it's not stated below. So from what I understand, that would be the case. And if that's the direction in which the.
We did inform the health committee of that during the meeting, just to, you know, clarify, try and have some clarity.
I think that's why he's bringing it up.
And I noticed that, you know, you had what you just said, and Mr. Isaac had a different belief on it. And I believe, you know, so be it. And I think, you know, I don't know if we have to make a motion to reach out to Mr. Klein to get an official list of who's included, or ask him if that is correct.
I'm working on negotiations, so I would just ask Mr. Kelly to contact Mr. Klein for some verification.
I will ask the specific question, but it's been queried in the past.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen some things, and I remember things from the past, and I remember certain positions. I don't want to be in the lead negotiator for the new department and meeting, union. I don't want to come out of the gate with a grievance, right? And I think that's going to be something that, you know, could possibly happen. And I don't want to start off on the wrong foot.
It would be an unscrupulous practice charge.
So I don't want to, I don't want to engage with that. But I'm good, as Mr. Warner said, I'm fine with the rest of the budget. I actually sat, just for public record, I went out and I did my due diligence with Dana and Steve. They were kind enough to give me, I don't know, half hour, an hour of their time. I got a little bit more time for Dana, seeing some things around the golf club. And then Mr. Tibbles came down and we talked about the proposed salary ranges. But we talked about a whole host of things, so it was good, good stuff for me. Get to, you know, get into their heads a little bit more and learning more about the golf course. And I think that this, Steve, I don't want to, I believe that this budget, outside of what Mr. Hinckley just brought to the board's attention, based on the, I guess, your golf meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Hinckley?
Correct.
So the new ranges, salary ranges, because I've learned that it's mostly on Mr. Tibble's side of the house, right, the maintenance side of the house. Are those incorporated already in this budget?
Yes.
So those are already incorporated in the budget? Okay, so the only recommendation I want to make to the board is, it gets dangerous, in my opinion, being a business person, is where you start doing new proposed ranges. And as a municipality, you just keep hiking them up, up and up and up. And we don't know what the economy brings, you know, recessions and all the things of the like. My recommendation is going to be to leave the lower end of the range there and go to the top end of the range that they're proposing. So instead of using, you know, the range, just let them go to the top end of their range, or keep the bottom end there just in case bad things happen. You don't want to be locked into paying somebody because what this paper demonstrates is current pay. So it doesn't look like it's any significant bounce from where they're proposing to go to. And I agree with that. But the range is the range, and I, you know, I hate taking that range. Every, you know, municipality sometimes, and I know you're an enterprise fund, but we tend to just think that taxpayers continuously have a piggy bank that can keep feeding the machine, and we can't feed the machine, right? So I would, not saying we'll ever have to use the lower end of the range, but from a business standpoint, I think leaving the lower end of the range is there and just opening the range is all we're doing. I'm cool with that as well. I understand the argument in the conversations I hear, not that that was an argument with Mr. Tibbles. But I listened to it, I understand it, I've seen market conditions that Mr. Tibbles had done his homework. I agree to it, and I'm fine with it. I just, I'd like to keep a lower end of the range so that we don't stranglehold.
Yeah, the budget, the future budgets.
Yeah, I mean, with bad things starting to happen, you know, whatever happens, we had some bad times with golf, and you know what? You might want to, you might be able to bring.
We called it out being cyclical when it was slow, and everybody was worried. Actually, we had some doom and gloom theory that, you know, we were going to wrap this up in '21. We weren't going to make it past year 2021. And me and Steve were saying, listen, this is a sport, this is an ending. It's all cyclical, it's going to come around and go around, it always does. And here we are, and next part of the cycle, so.
Yeah, you're on a, you're on a good swing, so, you know, no pun intended. But, you know, with that said, I just, from a business standpoint, I look at it as, you never lock yourself into higher rates because it's impossible to go back, right? So it just leaves that flexibility if you want to bring some more people on. In fact, you, or Mr. Tibbles, might say, hey, you know what? Instead, I can just bring in two young kids at this rate, the lower end of the range. Instead of hiring one at this rate, let me bring in two, and it's only this much more of a difference being both part-timers, and I get a little bit more productivity out of my staff. It leaves open options for you folks. So my recommendation is leave the lower end of the range, open it up to the top end that they're proposing. And I make that motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Josh Carrick.
Just to reach out to you too, because you did mention the RFP for a consulting. Just to reach out to you too, cause you did mention the RFP for a consulting, they, they did research that and we are putting it out and I don't, they've reached out to you and let you know, but that is moving forward.
Awesome.
David drawn one up, I think he may have provided that to you, what they drove up. So just to make sure it's what we're, what.
Yeah, it has to have procurement.
Yeah.
And it.
Because it's over, yeah, it could be over $10,000.
And I'd also like to extend an invitation, if anybody's interested in going out and doing a competition check to, you know, go out for a ride with me and go check some of the best courses and, you know, and who we compete with.
All right, I thought we were gonna go to Foxwoods.
No, no, not, not, well, we could, we have to play, but just to go to look at it and kind of walk, walk the facility, count heads, talk to some people and assess. That way, when you have a consultant report come in, you can have some hands-on information of reality and compare it to their reality.
I think Dana's offering to buy the board lunch.
Yeah.
So, you know, I appreciate that invitation and I think that the first invitation that this board needs to do is, is get out to our golf course.
Sure.
And I don't wanna talk too much because we're on TV land, right? And, and right now, it's nobody else's business but ours, but I think we need to get out there.
Yeah.
Post the meeting, you know, jump in the car, or go do the, you know, show around there and take, take a look at grounds and things of the like and let's see what their needs are. Because I spent some time, and I'm not a golfer, but I can tell you right now, our golf course has needs. And it's something that I've talked about a few years back and it went to, fell on deaf ears and, and I don't believe that we have much time left to keep falling on deaf ears. So I would like to be able to do something real soon with, with the golf folks over there.
Set it up, I'm on board.
And can you, can you do, do us of all a favor?
Sure.
You gotta make the letters a little bit bigger on, I need help signs out front. Oh, yeah. I drive by, I'm like, what does that say?
If you can read the sign, we definitely want you to come in and apply. If you can't read it, mm.
I was like, wait a minute, is this a joke? But yeah, it's microscopic stuff.
I got stuck behind a school bus in my car. That was, that was my fault. Explanation to the folks at Staples who made the sign was inadequate, I assume. Either that or I'd have to increase the font and send it back to them, so.
There you go.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Cheers. All right, next, technology.
Actually, should we do planning and, planning that board had put a hold on it, the planning board, the FinCom have suggested town plan the salary $75,000 and the support staff, which is changing, now goes to nine hours.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
So this has been a long, exhausting, even though it's a small budget for me, is, is, you know, the kind of BS that goes around and then, you know, I, I've talked to planning, we've talked to planning in here about part-time agent versus full-time agent. You know, I watch meetings where, you know, the town administrators, you know, in planning board meetings with the person from Appa trying to convince everybody about the town, the full-time town planner and benefits and grant writing and all that hoopla stuff. But again, I think we all know the town a lot better than most people do, so, you know, I'm adamant and I have been adamant about the part-time, speaking to them, and I had some conversations with the chair offline and other members, part-time versus full-time. And I said in a public meeting, 19 and a half hours, and if you actually had somebody in that office working 19 and a half hours, we would do just fine, you'd be able to see the productivity that we have. That's kinda, the conversation and a lot of people, I guess, agree offline, but, you know, certain people have led them to believe that the full-time agent, planner's needed. I can tell you right now, I'm still not convinced that a full-time planner for the town of Acushnet, knowing that office pretty well, I spent some time up in that building, probably at least once a week, I'm popping through there, sometimes two or three times a week. That office is not busy, you speak to the clerk that's there now, not, not necessary, but for some reasons, certain people believe it needs to be full-time. So, look, if, and, and they, they seem to be convinced. If, if the board of selectmen's recommendation, it appears that somebody spoke for us and put $10,000, $9,700 inside the stormwater agent salaries clerical, and it's, now it's up to $75,000, which only a year and a half ago was $50,000 and then that individual didn't work his required hours and he, and we bumped it to 53. So there's a history of, you know, failure in that office. I, I recognize that we have a few new members on the planning board that are trying to do the best thing for the town. And if, if, if they so choose to stick with $75,000 for a town planner and, you know, they wanna go out and, and try to hire, so be it. I can, I can tell you that that office can't warrant a full-time town planner when we've left it vacant for four and a half months now. And in the meantime, we should have probably, because the comment was also made to the planning board is, I can't find a part-time planner. Well, my question would be is, what did you advertise for one? You didn't. So you shouldn't make a comment saying that you, you can't find a part-time planner. Maybe if you just called a few friends and said, anybody available for part-time planning unless you advertise for a part-time planner, and that didn't take place. So, you know, I don't like the way things were presented to the planning board in trying to convince everybody that we need this, you know, full-time guy or girl doing this job. They seemed to be convinced after that conversation. I'm still not in that camp, but you know what? If, if they wanna do it and this board says, you know, go out and advertise for a full-time at 75, so be it. I'm just, you know, I, I said what I had to say and I will say this. If this board says that that's gonna be the salary for a full-time planner, I would like to have a commitment from this board that says, then that's, that's a salary for a town planner. And it ain't gonna be, because we have a fiduciary duty to taxpayers, when we advertise inside of our budget that we go to town meeting and we say $75 grand for X, Y, and Z spot, I don't believe that we have the right to manipulate that salary after town meeting votes several, I'll use this case, $75,000. And then, oh, we can't find one, so we're gonna just, we'll find 10 grand somewhere else and pay them 85 grand. That's misrepresenting the budgets. I, I don't like that philosophy. I know it's been done. I'm just asking for some kind of commitment from the board that says we won't allow that to occur because technically in our bylaws, it says all compensation shall be fixed. And that's what we do when we go to town meeting. We put a number in there for, for people's salaries, you need to stick by it.
Okay. Mr. Gasper, I appreciate your opinion on that and your view of the town planner. You've, you've been pretty adamant about it. I respectfully disagree. I think, you know, I think, I think there's opportunity to, to make great strides in this town with the proper personnel in place, something we've been lacking, just at a minimum, chasing down grant money, relieving a lot of points on the board, so. But I do respect your opinion when it comes to salary. I would say, I would urge the planning commission, planning department to look for somebody up to that number, doesn't have to be that number, but I think the, it's time to put our big boy pants on and grow up, so. What's my opinion?
I'm okay, I'm okay. As I said, Mr. Warner, I said, I, I spoke to another planning board members and, you know, I, I get, I get where they're at, right? And they need help. And I'm just saying that that, that office has been vacant for a long time and it should have never been.
You get your opinion, I'm giving mine. I wanna hear from you.
I'm just gonna keep it pretty blunt. I say, you know, at this point, I've had some conversations with planner, planning board members as well, and if they think they can make it work, I'm on board. I do agree that this should be the salary based off town meeting vote and that's about it, but I'm good with it.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the planning board budget?
So moved.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
I'll abstain.
Aye. Aye.
Inspection Services, FinCom, in consultation with the building inspector, changed two expense items from what the board originally considered. Those were changed because, number one, the documents in the planning office as far as the building codes were so out of date or not there that we couldn't verify. The building inspector doing his research would have to go to other places to get what is necessary and he was not sure why they were not in the office. So it went from 1,340 in office supplies to 3,550 and it went from 400 for building inspections to 800 just to make sure that if there was a conflict of interest, you could bring someone else in.
Are we still using the former building commissioner for inspections?
Not.
We have a new building commissioner.
Yes.
My question is, are we still using the former building commissioner for inspections?
I haven't seen any billings for him. I know that there's multiple folks that have been contacted to line up people that can come in.
Motion to approve the inspectional services.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The water department, there was no change, but it's in here?
Uh, they, there's a change because of the change in the clerical.
Wow. Yeah, that's what we just voted earlier on, Mr. Hinckley's efforts.
Yep.
Yep, that's fine.
Motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
I mean, second, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries.
And the sewer, and the sewer's only down 10, was dropped, I see, and same thing with clerical, I would imagine, but sewer dropped 10,000 and I spoke with Kathy and she's okay with it even though rates are going up, which is.
And then you've been provided some.
Motion to approve the sewer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you've been provided some other ones that also show the clerical and then the request on the soil board.
Yep, and can we, we skipped over technology.
And that's why I was going to go knock on the door to get the technology.
It's, it's pretty in line with what we said before, though. The, the, what you, what you did though is, you can't do, and again, because of the union, the new union, you up that salary for system administrator and you can't do that because that's a union position, right? It's been identified as a union position.
Let me get the technology and just make sure which one is which.
So my only comment on that would be that I'm not asking as a raise or a step or a cola, I'm just asking that that position's salaried amount be put back to what it previously was. Cause again, I'm not gonna be in this position forever. So when we go try and advertise for that IT coordinator salary at what it is right now, it's gonna be a huge jump that's gonna be needed. So I'm just trying to help the town hedge what it's at right now. That's, that's my only comment on that.
In 2021, it was the actual.
No, I understand that, but we made the cut because it was a different individual. And then we brought him in and made the cut. And then if we made the cut in the previous year's budget, which it was, same thing applies with the golf budget, right? And because of the new union thing, it's, it's, it's gonna be perceived that that's what's.
Unfair labor practice possibility again.
That we're paying somebody an additional amount of money. And the only way that, I mean, we could do it, surely we could, if, based on what Nick's saying, sure, you can leave the money there, but you gotta make sure you ain't paying out that additional money while we're, with the union and, you know what I mean, negotiating with the union. So I, theoretically speaking, you can do whatever you wanna do, but we could do whatever we wanna do with a budget. You just gotta make sure that that, through the Freedom of Information requests is made, that that pay is not going out. Just because of the union again, it all comes down to the union. I mean, we're not putting anything in any other department and salary increases.
You, you could, you could either put it at the 14.5 or you can put it at the amount and.
14.5's not gonna make us a break it if we just level fund it, is what I'm saying. It's only $4,500 and I appreciate the, the gesture, but $4,500 if we end up flipping that out somewhere.
And as we know, very shortly, we could have a certified assistant town accountant and we would have no need for consultants anymore. You're taking the exam in the spring, right?
It would be for next month. I'll be qualified.
That's a distance conversation as well.
Right, but I mean, I think.
So if you wanna, if you want us to amend, approve it with an amendment to 14.5, then we can get it printed.
I think we should be approaching IT as if Nick didn't exist. Like, that's the right thing to do, right?
Yeah, and I'm just trying to help a little bit.
It's the thing, the jobs, the responsibilities are responsibility and it should be treated accordingly, you know? Nick walks away tomorrow, we're still gonna deal with the issues. Let's put the infrastructure in place to, to deal with it the right way rather than, you know, once again, trying to do some, you know, spin plates on our head.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay. I'm just, I'm here to comment because I know everything's being scrutinized right now with everything that's going on. And, you know, the last thing I need is going into negotiations and an envelope being handed to me right away.
But that's, but that's part of the process, I'm sure. My guess is we'll probably get a few of those because that only increases the bargaining power of the negotiation, right? So it is what it is. We've got, we've gotta move on and I think we've gotta deal with the infrastructure in town, things in place.
Hey, that's what it is.
I'm just looking to get the budget printed, so it's the board's pleasure.
Can't let this hang the whole, whole thing up. But I'm just one person, so whatever you guys wanna do.
I mean, I'm just concerned, like I said, I'm just concerned with, before we even get union stuff started, you know, unfortunately, I don't have to, fortunately for me, I don't have to deal with this union.
But we all do.
Yeah, we do.
We can direct.
Kevin's just the representative, at the end of the day, it requires the whole board, so, you know.
I just, you know, I don't, I have no problem with returning back to the original budget either. I also, you know, it was there for a reason. I just don't know how to handle this without getting some kind of grievance, you know?
At that point, it just comes down to the integrity of our offices and, and making sure that nobody's being paid more than what it is. And just because there's an allocation there, it doesn't mean that we're paying somebody above and beyond that number. We just have an appropriation, we see fit, the board of selectmen have that, this is our budget, we have the authority to do what we want with a line.
If we can do that, perfectly all right with that.
You know, it does raise some questions, but, I mean, I think Mr. Kelly would agree that it's pretty easy to argue.
Yeah.
That we've made.
It's all public record anyway, so, you know, we can.
There'll be a public records request, I can guarantee you that, based on things that I've seen and heard in the past.
So we'll just allocate it, I'm okay with that and just make sure.
I would, I would, I don't even.
I'll post it on the webpage.
I don't know why it's such a Mickey Mouse number anyway. I mean, we got all this crazy ass increase, but what is that number? I can't even see it, everything's so fine print. What is that, 19 what?
1906. Yeah.
Just go to 20 grand then. I mean, if we're doing things in the best interest of moving forward, where'd 1906 come from?
It was just the previous, I was just not going based off of.
The budget's close to balance, 1906.
So let's just.
That's a close sign.
I don't know about that, but, okay.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, let's leave it the way it is.
Uh, just as a what if on the soil board, we had discussions and I included contracted services in, as a new item.
Yeah, that's going somewhere now.
And it was 20,000.
Yeah, I don't know what the original budget was, I'll look at that, I don't. Yeah, I don't know what the original budget was, I'll look at that, I don't have it.
There is, uh, uh, there's, uh, no item for contracted services. No lie.
But you made one. And the new one?
Hmm.
So we have to, we, we have to, so I've had some conversations, um, with council and Mr. Kelly, and you have to have some kind of budget there in order to determine a, a permit fee, right?
Hmm.
Now, these have to be justified, and I think that we have some ideas of how you bring in an engineering, because we're not capable of doing in-house, and they, they do an inland survey, they call it basically an in-place survey, they snapshot the court, they come back in November, prior to permit renewal, snapshot it again and make sure that the amount of soil that's gonna be moved is in compliance with the soil board permit. I think that's something that needs to be done for the future.
Yeah.
Um, to keep everybody, you know, in a straight and narrow line, no more this, you know, give me this and give me that, and just saying you are. So, I mean, it's, it's twenty grand or whatever Mr. Kelly just said, but it is what it is.
Yeah. I think, you know, moving, moving forward, it's a good idea, now that we're making progress, it's-
Not maybe, if, if we do a revolving fund, like a lot of other departments have, if we set it up like that, um, it technically wouldn't be coming from taxation, it would, the general fund, it would be coming from license and permits. So it's just a different pot of money that it's coming from, but it's actually being captured through license and permits and not taxation.
True.
And being covered by the applicant.
The, a revolving fund, uh, can cover this. We have an opinion that it would be non-governmental services, it can't be used. This would, it'd affect the seed money prior to, because we're going to have to set up the revolving fund in an article in town meeting.
For the soil board.
For the soil board.
We got like five other ones already, right? Library's got them, parking recreation.
Actually, in some of the research we've been doing, we're finding ones that, uh, they're revolving funds and there are other funds similar, and we are looking for some of the language of the revolving funds we have, because we're not sure they were set up properly.
Of course they were. Okay, very good. Alright, and what else?
Uh, the Board of Selectmen has to approve and sign the warrant at a regularly scheduled meeting on or prior to April twenty-four.
Alright, we're meeting next time, what, on the fourteenth?
You're meeting on the eleventh.
On the eleventh?
No, we're not. April eleventh, the public here, PJ Keating, my friend, no, we're not.
Oh, okay, then we have to meet after the-
Can we meet beforehand, though, just to sign the, uh?
Well, that, uh, no, you gotta read the warrant first.
Got it.
What's April eleventh, isn't that a Wednesday? Was that a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yeah, but we said it that night, saying that we weren't having a selectmen's meeting.
Correct. I think it was just a, yeah, it's a Tuesday.
You guys wanna do it on the, or Wednesday?
Tenth?
Do it on the day. Whatever, how about Monday, when he's got the day off?
Tenth, I'm always open on Monday, so that's fine with me.
You guys wanna do it in the afternoon or the tenth or something?
Mr. Hinkley's got Mondays off. Um, Mr. Dinkin, are you available? Got the moderator in the audience?
Yes, I am.
Are you available Monday at noon on the tenth?
I'll be here.
You bringing the coffee?
It's noon, it's lunch, dude.
I gotta still be the coffee, it's Monday.
Alright, so,
Beat me to it.
Monday, the tenth, it will be approval of the warrant. I'm also going to need, and I'll provide the, uh, board to look at our financial policy and investment policy. Uh, the health insurance, uh, will, uh, policy will be available by then, and liability insurance policies, because we have to lock those down so we can put that in the budget too.
We haven't voted all the other budgets, though. We only did preliminary votes.
Yeah.
So we have to, I mean, we did a few tonight.
But you have to vote the budget and then the warrant.
Lisa's got everything in the minutes right now. Lisa, she's, she's got all the minutes recorded right now.
Alright. Anything else? We're going to executive session, right, any announcements?
Uh, Mr. Jamin, if you had a line?
Absolutely.
Just wanna remind everybody at home, we still have committee and commission vacancies, and, uh, if you'll notice, Conservation Commission does have a one-member vacancy that they've been asking to get put on here for a while. Um, it involved, uh, a member that needed to resign first, and, uh, we're good, so sign up, send a letter.
Speaking of that, Beaufortation Committee, uh, Mr. Eric James, I'm from Slovene Street, expressed an interest, uh-
Thought we'd appoint him.
But it looks like the, it's dormant.
There's one member.
It's dormant, so we gotta-
No, well, there's one, there's one member that's still on it.
Okay, anyway.
But you can't have two, because if they argue, there's no hope.
Well, you have to, you're right, you should at least have a three-person board.
Right.
We got eight vacancies, so-
Can't just have two.
Brittany, uh, I can't remember the last-
Do you want me, if you wanna post that on, uh, social media?
Yep.
Alright, and we got, um, open positions in building department clerk and town administrator, what are we doing with that?
The town administrator, uh, next Monday, the, uh, Mr. Hinkley's doing the, uh, interviews with the fire chief and myself.
And administrative assistant?
Yep.
How about the building department?
The building department, uh, we, they interviewed two. Uh, third one declined, and, uh, they would not recommend any of the three, we're going back out.
We did get some more in after we had scheduled interviews, uh, so we do have more options in the pool to pick them, so we should be-
Happy? Very good. Alright, uh, so we're going to executive session, we will not return, so, uh, is there a motion to go into executive session on General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Sub- Section twenty-one, Subsection B, Paragraph Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation strategy, ARPA consultant and engineering consultant contracts, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and the board will not return to public session. Is there a motion to go into executive session, roll call, vote, Mr. Hinkley?
Uh, motion and yes.
Second and yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes, and I'm a yes, we're now in executive session, we will not return.